Piece of real property located approximately 1740 West, 700 South. I'm providing for an effective date.
Motion by Diana. Second by Lynn, by voice Lynn.
Yes.
Ben.
Yes.
Sid.
Yes.
Eric.
Yes.
Diana.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Item 10C is to consider for adoption a resolution 2016-026 approving a cross-access easement with KPB equities for the purpose of installing a sewer main and related appurtenances on property located at approximately 1740 West, 700 South, and providing for an effective date. Same song, different frame or something?
Yes, exactly.
Okay. Any discussion questions? Okay. On this one, let's see. Make sure I keep these in order. Okay, do we have a motion?
Mayor, I make a motion to adopt resolution 2016-026 approving a cross-access easement with KPB equities for the purpose of installing, is that the right one I'm reading?
Yes.
Purpose of installing a sewer main and related, how do you say that?
Appartnances.
Appartnances.
That's good enough.
Property located approximately 1740 West, 700 South, and providing for effective date. I've never seen that word before.
It's a real estate word.
Well, we have a motion anyway.
Yes.
By Eric.
Anybody second it?
I'll second.
Okay.
It was a rough one, but yeah.
It was good enough.
Thank you. And a second by Ben, by voice Lynn.
Yes.
Ben.
Yes.
Sid.
Yes.
Eric.
Yes.
Diana.
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay. Item D is a continued item to consider for approval, a commercial subdivision called The Void, located at approximately 1740 West, 700 South, in the Grove Zone Commercial Sales Sub District. And Ken, you're going to present this one.
Okay, this is one of those finally type applications we've been working on for quite some time. Of course, the concept was presented to the city, what was it, two years ago or so? And so we have been working with the applicants to prepare this plat and site plan for the Void Entertainment Center, which we anticipate will be received well and be of great benefit to the community. So what this shows then, with the direction of north being on the left side of the sheet, you'll see North County Boulevard coming up through here and Pleasant Grove Boulevard coming down here. So where they meet is the site which McDonald's has purchased, we don't know if or when they will build. But north of that, and at this point, to the east is the Holiday Oil Station. So all that property that was formerly proposed to be the Evermore Theme Park is now being proposed for other uses, and one of those would be The Void Entertainment Center on this parcel right here. So the plat actually includes two parcels or two lots with road dedication coming in through here. One thing I'll want to point out, as part of this proposal, The Void Plat A includes a roadway, access off of North County Boulevard coming into a roundabout that will also connect to 450 South, connecting over to Pleasant Grove Boulevard. This portion of the roadway is proposed to be called Void Way. Now, there has been expressed a concern at Planning Commission, and staff has reviewed it, and also have a bit of concern with that, but we're going to just express our concern and let you do with it what you will. We would recommend that we not call the street after the name of a business, in that the business itself, not to cast any doom over future enterprises, but in many instances, buildings change hands. And what once was known as that business's road is now not for that business. It is a public street, and we feel that it would be more appropriate to name it something that is representative of the area, given a couple of options to look at. Trying to remember what the recommendations were now. Gateway was one of, formerly, the Grove Zone was known as the Gateway Zone, so Gateway Drive could be a possibility. There's plenty of others, and I am not seeing my list of names. I had two of them there. Oh, there it is, Grove Parkway. Okay, yeah, now Grove Parkway makes sense, because on the, when you go, this is actually heading southwest in this direction, the road that comes from this direction up to North County Boulevard is called Grove Parkway. So it would just be a continuation on the east side, which would make sense, instead of saying, "Go this way on Grove Parkway, go that way on Void Way, let's just call the whole thing Grove Parkway." I think, in my mind, that makes the most sense, to call it that. The applicants have proposed to call it Void Way, so I will leave that up to you. But other than that particular minor issue, staff has reviewed this, and with the previous items that preceded this, in resolving the little bit of land area there, this plat is ready for approval. The preliminary plat was approved by Planning Commission, and we feel good in recommending approval.
The name of a street part of this decision?
Once it is, the plat is approved, with that name on it, then that is the name of that road.
Okay. So whoever makes the motion changes the name of the road?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, it would, you would approve it subject to the plat.
A lot of power.
Name.
I know. I think a proctor.
As long as they get a second.
I think Ray would love that.
Well, if you think of it this way, the developers retain a lot of power in naming
roads just by submitting a plat, and we normally go along with it. But, so this, but it is your opportunity to make a change.
Is there another opportunity, Ken, to make a change? At the time, say the business changes hands, if something else is named, what's the process? Would an applicant come in and say?
It would be a plat amendment that would come forward to City Council, and you could change the name.
And it's money to change, for sign changing.
We've had other applicants, I mean, this isn't the first, that have come forward and asked for a particular kind of a name. We have other streets in our city that have names on them. They also have north, south, east, west designation for emergency services, you know, to try to avoid confusion that way. Some of them are named after people, families. I mean, you know, this isn't, this isn't an unusual request.
I'm actually okay with it. If we want to change it a later date, if it does change hands at some point, I think it's unique to the business. I think it makes sense right there. We don't get a lot of requests for this, but I'm okay with it.
Well, also keep in mind that across the street, there will be other businesses, future proposed businesses that will also access onto Void Way, that would most likely not have a part of The Void business.
First come, first served. The Void got here.
You play for this time.
I think then may well, yeah, the applicant.
I think, my name is Mike Batt, and we are the developer that's assisting KPB Equities in this development. And we're currently in the design and planning process to put The Void Corporate Center across the street. So the intent would be is that The Void Entertainment Center would be on the plat that's currently proposed, and then just-
Do you want to use your pointer right there? It's a thin one.
All right, here we go. And then just west of the, of the proposed road would be The Void Studios, where they do their design, their content design, things like that. And it's intended to be about 100,000 square foot building that would house all of the design and kind of corporate center for that entity, so.
Wasn't he also planning on bringing his other, some of his other business interests here into this area?
Yes, so we've got another plat that, I don't know exactly where it's at in the process, but it'll be coming maybe next City Council meeting. That's 14 acres right here that will be the Thrive, which is the botanical garden nursery use.
I got one, I got one. Thrive Drive.
Well, you just wait.
That'll be this little-
I think we changed it from Thrive Drive to something else that incorporates Thrive, but that is an intent where he's obviously putting forward a fair amount of capital and helping move this development forward. He'd like to-
That's actually kind of fun, naming streets. We could, we could spend some time doing this.
Okay. Other comments, questions? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for a motion.
I'll make the motion, Mayor and Council, that we approve a commercial subdivision called The Void, located at 1740 West, 700 South, in the Grove Zone Commercial Sales Sub District, with the street name Void Way.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Ben and a second by Diana. Just, just technical clarification, approximately 1740 West. Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. All right, and item E is also continued. It's a, to consider the site plan approval for The Void Entertainment Center located at approximately 1740 West, 700 South, in the Grove Zone.
Okay, so you've got in your packet, and here on the screen is a version of the site plan. So again, on the plat, we were talking about Void Way, which is just right here, and then as part of the-
Again, sorry, could you just speak right into the tip of the-
Boy, it sounds like I'm echoing in my own head, so, sorry.
I thought we all sounded like that.
So as part of the site plan, they will complete the construction of Void Way to this point, as well as the roundabout, and then the connection over to 450 South, tying into where the Holiday Oil is. So you'll have that two-way access into the property. So the front of the building is actually facing north, so you can come in and access the building over here, or around onto the other side. There's also a minor connection, which is not intended to be publicized or shown as a major access into the property, but it will be another connection coming off of the roadway where the McDonald's site, connecting into there. So you've got parking in the rear of the building, on the side, in the front. So at the front of the building, you have an entryway, which includes a restaurant on one side, and events room, retail shop, some other office facilities upstairs, so all that is in this area. Then the whole back warehouse area includes eight large pods, which any of you that have participated in the prototype, that was a fourth of a pod. So you times it by four, and then times that by eight, and that's what they're going to have the opportunity to, to utilize their technology with. And then in the middle, there's some smaller pods or stations for different types of their technological uses. We don't know all the details on that, but I'm sure we'll learn more about that. So it's an exciting concept, and then around that, we've got landscaping all around the sides, and, which include the landscaping and the parking and such. We have looked at the parking. Now, this is an interesting type of use that we haven't had in Pleasant Grove, so we did look at various types of entertainment businesses to see what type of parking we should require. So we feel comfortable that they are meeting the requirement, although I guess that remains to be seen, just exactly what will be needed. But I suppose we have opportunity on other properties adjoining, either to the west or to the north, that there could be some shared parking if needed.
On this site plan, Ken, is this the one where we change the width of the road, and so the road itself's not going to have parking on it? Is that correct?
Right. Marty, you want to address that?
Marty, you presented that.
Yeah, this is our, our new no parking local cross-section.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so this is kind of an overview of the other properties in there. So the dark area, of course, is the Void Site Plan area that we're approving tonight, but just showing the availability. Now, they mentioned that The Void Headquarters or offices could be on this side. This is the Thrive site, so you will be seeing that site plan coming in soon. Then there's some other retail, commercial, and office buildings that are proposed, not, nothing firm, but just-
More of a vicinity.
Vicinity, yes.
Can you back up to the site? Okay, well, go back to that one, hold for a minute. See this back one, sorry. Forward one, right here. See this piece?
Yes.
And there's the road. Now come back to the other one. This is labeled as the Grove Phase 1 Lot 1. We have the old road that's here, and then we have the site plan for this. Are we intending to incorporate this parcel and the removal of the road into this development? Into this phase?
What it is, is this area is actually owned by the city.
Okay.
And so that will include that old roadway, and this is going to be the detention basin for all of this area. And so they are participating with, with a little bit of ground on the south part that will be a part of the detention basin for both their project and the larger area.
Can you roll forward then? So when is this coming into play? Is this going to come at the same time as, as their development?
Marty, I don't know.
So it's, it's not actually detention for their site at all. It's more of a regional detention basin in this area. The city owns that entire parcel there, and as far as construction of that detention basin and further, that's not been discussed, as far as if it's going to be landscaped now or finalized. Their site is only going to the north of their development.
I just want to point that out, because I, I don't want any documentation showing that this whole area is going to be beautified and the road's going to get removed, and we don't know when the city is coming in to do our part of that.
Okay. Well, as far as the detail of the site plan with parking landscaping, all of that, we have not shown. Now, this is showing it as its location, but as far as the detail of landscaping, it ends right here.
Okay, thank you.
Marty, so I, I suppose I misunderstood. I thought that they were having some detention right here that was going to connect into-
Yeah, but not on our property. All their detention is on their property right here on the corner, as well as some underground detention that they're doing in their parking lot. But no detention from this site will flow onto the regional detention facility. Well, it eventually gets there, but it's not intended to detain that, well, that water for them.
All right, so then for architectural viewing, now this site plan and the architectural drawings did come forward to the Design Review Board prior to going to Planning Commission. Both bodies agreed that this is a wonderful plan for design, they like it, but they also agreed that it does not meet our current standards for architectural design in that area, which I should explain, we do have underway a new proposal for amending the architectural requirements in the Grove Zone, which is on the Planning Commission's agenda this week, and it will come forward to you soon, in that it is not yet in place. To approve this particular architectural design, it would require approval of a waiver, which is what they are seeking with this site plan approval.
This is to tease us, then, this isn't approved. This is not part of the approval.
No, this is part of the, of the approval, when you add to it a waiver of the architectural design guidelines in our current code.
Okay, so they're seeking that waiver tonight, in this?
Yes. Part of their request with the site plan approval. So it is a very unique concept for the, the look of the building. I think that is intended so that they can stand out as the type of business that they are, to gain some attraction. It is quite different from the original concept of a huge bubble.
Yeah, looks better than the dome, for sure.
So, but that, that's basically it. The, all the landscaping and parking requirements have been met, and positive recommendations from both the Design Review Board and the Planning Commission with the waiver of architectural requirements.
Okay. Other questions?
Ken, can you go back for a second to the vicinity map? I continue to get questions about the LDS Church that was approved in the area, and the road issued there. Can you kind of show us where that is on this map?
Okay, so that, that would be in this area up here. So this, actually, this vicinity map is not showing the updated, when you see the Thrive site plan for this area, it will show a realigned road that will connect into a future connection up north, where it's going along the west side of the LDS Church.
Okay. Wait, sorry, answer my question.
Other questions? So tonight, just to be clear, the dark area minus the city's portion is what we're addressing. It's the site plan. It does include the rendering concept of the architecture with a waiver. Other discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for a motion.
I'll make the motion, Mayor, Council. This is item E, is that right?
Correct.
I moved, we approved the site plan for The Void Entertainment Center located at approximately 1740 West, 700 South, in the Grove Zone Commercial Sales Sub District, subject to all findings and conclusions, and engineering, and fire requirements, and anything else, and anything else I need to make?
The waiver.
And the waiver, and approved the, the-
Architectural.
Architectural, necessary waiver.
I'll, I'll second it.
Motion by Ben, second by Diana. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, and thank you for finally submitting.
We're excited to see it built.
But, you know, it's turning out better than the original. It's good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Item 10F is to consider for adoption a resolution 2016-027 approving and adopting the Pleasant Grove City Fiscal Year 2016-2017 Budget, which includes a comprehensive fee schedule, and adopting the 2016-2017 certified tax rate of .001775, and providing for an effective date. And just to clarify, this has nothing to do with the road discussion that we have been discussing, and will continue to discuss for some time to come. Okay. Denise?
So I was, there's only, I wasn't going to go over everything, I think we've talked a lot about it, but one thing I did want to share with you, when it relates to the Class C roads, on page 10, I did make a slight change. Attorney Peterson was at a meeting last week, and the calculation with the gas tax change, there's been some things that they've found with the calculation that's going to be, have to be addressed, and it will probably either be in the July legislature or into January. And so right now, it looks like our, we're beginning to be reduced by about 115,000 from what we predicted. And so I've adjusted the budget for 17. It's not to say they're going, they're going to go and look at that, but just wanted to reflect a truer picture until that's addressed.
So from what number to what number?
It was, we wrote about 180, and they're saying we're going to get approximately 86,000. And so our number, so I, we lost about 115 from what they're saying right now, until they address the whole calculation, those type of things.
Yeah, we, we read the-
So do you need some clarification?
We got Cameron's thing, and then we got his other thing. We talked about it in a cog meeting, an appeal meeting, a few, a few days earlier than that, and it's very disappointing.
Yeah, yeah. So I did make that change, just so we can reflect, and hopefully it will be remedied sooner than later, and so I just wanted to make that change. And so that was on page 10. So that's the only change from what we've had in the past, so I just wanted to share that with you as you're moving, as you're making that.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
So the effect on the budget with that change, specific to roads, specific to Class C, it was additional funds that were calculated in for this year, so the additional funds are being reduced. We're still getting more than we've gotten before, but it's less than-
Yeah, but it's less than we thought it was going to be for us.
Right.
Yeah, until they remedy.
Okay. Okay, do we have questions for Denise, still lingering on the budget? And does everyone understand why we go through the certified tax rate? This is always a question that comes up, and I get asked every year privately about why the tax rate changes. Denise, do you want to describe what happens with property tax?
Yeah, unless, you actually get your growth in your levy, but if you don't actually-
I don't think everybody knows the terms you're using.
So you are supposed to be revenue neutral unless you make a property tax increase, but in their calculation, which is pretty complicated if anyone's ever, but you do get your growth. So as your, your community's adding in anything new, commercial, new residential, you do get that percentage without going back and do a truth in taxation, but anything short of that, you don't get. And so that number will change, because other than growth, your number stays pretty flat, your revenue number stays pretty flat, and so that fluctuates the tax levy. And then you do have to certify your, if you have any debt service, you have to certify that rate, and that's what you have, what the citizens have given you permission to do property tax for. And so that'll move your rate a little bit, too, depending on if your debt service is going down. So we certify those rates every year, but unless you have a property tax increase, your general, your general property tax rate doesn't change, the revenue stays pretty flat.
So using my home as an example, all $50,000 of it, if you look at the very bottom of the tax statement that comes from the county, we're, we're down there. We're the small, smallest of the numbers. And what that means is if we have been authorized to charge me $100 or $200 a year for the value of my home, just because the home appreciates in value or anything else, the rate changes so that the dollar amount that I pay remains at that $100 or $200 a year.
Pretty close, too.
Okay. And then if we, as a council or a city, have gone through the process and approved an additional amount to fund something, that's where we go through the truth in taxation, and then that rate is changed.
Can you speak, Denise, to the trend line with the certified tax rate? What was it last year and the year before that? How, what direction's changing?
I don't have those numbers. I know that last year, it was .1885, and so you can tell that it's going down a little bit, because our debt service stayed pretty flat, so I don't have the exact numbers, only because I looked at that when I changed the resolution. So I do know that, but that's what you generally see if you're not going to do a truth in taxation, you just keep your levy, keeps going down, but your revenue's staying pretty flat from what you've, you know, been in the past.
Thanks. Other discussion, questions, comments?
No, Kathy sent, was it the pricing on the rec and the pool, is that correct? I just thought if anyone had any input on that.
You're talking about the delta between-
The rates.
Expenses, oh, the rates.
The rates, because we have that resident send us-
Okay.
It's on page four-
Yeah, we had some questions, yeah.
It's on page 46.
Of the?
Well, I don't know.
Fee schedule.
Did you change stuff around at all?
No, I didn't, I didn't change the fee schedule. Dion has some information that he can share.
I just want Dion to get up.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's in your drop box here. So if you, if you look at that, you can, that chart there, you can see our day pass is actually lower than anyone else, but we are higher as far as our recreation center fees go, and our, for both the resident and non-resident combined, yes. So for the pool, the outdoor pool and the recreation center, we are higher.
So the proposed rate, just from what that resident was saying, we are going to be higher than the other cities.
We already are.
Or for the individual day pass?
Not for the individual day pass, but for the combined.
For the combined.
Yes.
Okay, even without the increase, we're still higher with that.
Right, without the increase, we're still higher. So, you know, with the subsidy that we put in, you know, the city puts into both of those, this was just a way to make that a shorter gap, which would be passed on to the user.
Questions, concerns about this item?
I'm good.
Can you go ahead and speak into your microphone, please?
Sure, I've got a few comments that I'd make about the budget, not about this issue in particular, about the rec fees. I think that's actually progress we're making in terms of trying to reduce the amount of subsidy the city makes, and I'm, I'm comfortable with the user fee changes. I think they do need to be regularly revisited. We should make sure that we're minimizing subsidy and comparable with communities around us, so that there's incentive to use that. I wanted to just make some comments about the broader budget in general.
I didn't quite understand what you said, I'm sorry.
Oh, I, I said, on, on the rec fees and the pool fees?
Yeah, I'm losing my hearing, and I apologize.
Yeah, you're fine. No, you're just fine.
Seriously.
My point was that I'm, I'm comfortable with those changes, I think they're good changes. I think that they, there are two things that I'm looking for, a reduction of subsidies that we see in general for these services that are amenities that we- I think that they, there are two things that I'm looking for, a reduction of subsidies that we see in general for these services that are amenities that we value, but that shouldn't be heavily subsidized on the backs of taxpayers. And I appreciate the fact that we're considering and thinking about how, how attractive a pass is based on our comparisons with other communities. So I think this part, that part of the budget makes a lot of sense. Grateful for the work that's been done there. Grateful for a lot of the work that's happened in the budget. There are specific transactions that are integrated into this budget that I object to and have problems with. And when those were brought up, I made my objections very clear on the record. And so I have opposed specific, specific actions and specific transactions that have been integrated into this budget. And so just kind of for the record, for the public's benefit, I'm, I want to make clear, there's always a lot of interest in my particular reactions to the budget. And I want to say to the public that's listening and anybody that is curious about these issues, one piece of advice I often hear is never let perfect get in the way of the good. This is not a perfect budget in my view, but I think it shows a tremendous amount of progress in a lot of areas. I've been grateful for the work that staff did to scrutinize existing budgets and to look for more money for roads. I think that's important progress and manifests a good effort to try to meet the public in the middle, which I think we want to see. I want us to set goals to do more of that in years going forward. I think we can do further reviews of existing budgets and I think we ought to set specific goals on what we're going to do next with rec, what we're going to do next with other areas of interest so that we can continue to progress. Because I think this budget is far from perfect in my view, but it does have, it does have its merits and I don't want to let perfect get in the way of good.
Great, thank you Ben, duly noted. Other compliment or comments?
Compliments.
Another Freudian there.
I'm just curious, what was the fee beforehand on the rec, pool combined, sorry?
Good question. I want to say it's like we increased it five dollars.
Okay.
So the passes went up five dollars. The day pass went up fifty cents.
I'm talking to the rec center and pool where it says five ten, what was it before? Is that part of that, is that what you're talking about?
It was probably five oh five, yeah. I mean, we went up
Probably, that's probably posted on their website.
Yeah, it is.
Well, I have the, just the family pass for the rec center, but not the pool combined with it.
So, so yeah, if you take the, the three thirty-five, right? We were three thirty for a family pass. We increased it five and then the one seventy-five for the pool and we increased that five. So that's where the five dollar increase.
I got it.
So it was five hundred last year?
Well, if you combine the both, it would have been five hundred last year, yes. We're only increasing the combination pass, I guess, if you want to call it that, ten dollars.
Cause I have annual family pass for a resident is three thirty-five plus a family pass for the pool is about a hundred and sixty. Is that what you're looking at as an annual resident pass?
I'm, I'm going off the sheet that we have that, that's in the drop box.
Where are you, where are you getting your numbers from?
I'm on the rec center website under community center resident annual pass is three thirty-five. And then if you add a season pass for a family at the pool, it's about a hundred and sixty. And so that's coming up to about, oh, never mind. We're good.
Okay. Any other comments or questions or compliments on the, the budget that has been prepared?
Let me make one more, just kind of elaborate on one of my thoughts. One of the areas I'd like to see us make a goal to improve going forward in future years. A, a lot of the commentary I get is frustration with an eighteen percent of our enterprise funds going to administration. And people's experience in the private sector, it's a very different number that they expect to see going towards administration. They expect to see progress year over year on that front. And so I'd like to encourage us as we're talking budget and as we're setting a course potentially for how we would look at this in the future. I'm, I'm essentially objecting to specific transactions, comfortable with the overall budget and the spirit of compromise, but would like to see us set some goals, particularly with relation to administrative overhead.
Can you address the dollar, the percentage amount there? Where does this come from? Where, where did the establishment of eighteen percent come from as a administrative fee to enterprise funds?
I'm not positive that, that was set before I came, but when I allocated it for seventeen, I actually didn't go look at a percentage. I actually took the percentages of the budgets that we feel like that have, you know, that serve the enterprise funds and took those funds in their budgets. And what's really interesting is based on that formula, it is also eighteen percent, which is, I used a little bit different criteria from how Dean had done it in the past and used it how I was familiar with where the city that I came from. And it's interesting that it came out at eighteen percent.
With an expense approach.
Yeah, I took an
That the expense of providing services to those fees, what do these expenses cost?
Yeah.
What is the percentage of the use for each of these entities that are benefiting from it? And if you allocated that out, it ends up close to eighteen percent.
Yeah, so I thought it was interesting. I didn't use, I don't know what approach that Dean had to use in the past, but I use more what I've been to tie it on the expenses and allocate it to those enterprise funds and interesting as it was.
So what would the goal be?
You know.
Well, and maybe Denise could inform us a little bit or the rest of staff if there's a sense of what kind of progress could be made. But if we can reduce that by a percentage point a year or something like that. I mean, a lot of the private sector industries where I heavily counsel companies, we're looking at ways to reduce those kinds of costs.
The problem is, is if you base it on the expenses that you're trying to share out to those organizations, which is a lot of personnel, you have other expenses. For example, we're seeing, you know, our personnel is more, so when the funds that we're allocating, I mean, some things are costing more. So when you're trying to allocate that out, which that's what you're trying to do is share those expenses. I mean, it's not getting any cheaper to provide medical insurance or those type of things. And then some of our expenses are going up. So, you know, insurance, all that type of stuff, those are the expenses that we're sharing with them. And so unless we see some of those things reduced, then I think it's going to be difficult to do the other. And so those were, those are things that we'd have to look at or unless we decide, you know, just another way to do an allocation, but
So then for the purposes of tonight, why don't we take that, that's an specific example, but move that to our discussion for the next budget retreat?
I'd love it.
And deep dive so that we have a clearer understanding of what makes up these numbers and why they are set where they are. It does not sound like they're arbitrary. It sounds like there's a, there's an actual formula in an effort to fairly divide the fee amongst all those that are using them.
I think that's right. My sense is, and I guess my, my broader point is that if you're looking for economies of scale and efficiencies as you grow an organization, if we did it as an allocation rather than as a way to expense out burdens that we incur or whatever costs that we see, if we were to try to allocate and justify time actually spent with each enterprise and look at it through that kind of a lens, we would get a very different algorithm for each enterprise and we may be able to see places where we can achieve greater efficiencies over time.
So again, let's take that as an option and we'll explore that in detail when we get to the, to the budget hearing.
I'd love it.
Or to the budget offsite discussion. Okay. Anyone else have general questions or concerns on the budget? Okay, I personally, I think this has got to be one of the best budgets I've seen. Denise, good job.
I learned a lot. Still got a lot to learn.
We've all learned a lot and we keep learning. Okay, so with that then, I will entertain a motion. Language would be on your yellow paper.
This is F.
This is item F.
So Mayor, I propose that we adopt resolution two thousand sixteen dash zero two seven approving and adopting the Pleasant Grove City's Fiscal Year two thousand sixteen slash two thousand seventeen budget, which includes a comprehensive fee schedule and adopting the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen certified tax rate of point zero zero one seven seven five and providing for an effective date.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Diana, a second by Lynn. By voice, Sid?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Diana?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Motion carries, it is unanimous.
I just got goosebumps.
Ten days to spare. No, what day does it have to be? That's tomorrow, sorry. One day. Okay. Item G is to consider a proclamation declaring July first through seventh as local first Utah Independence Week. Tina, do you want to read this? Do you want me to read it?
Read it, Mayor.
In support of local first Utah's Independence Week, whereas Independence Week provides a time to celebrate the independence of the members of the community of Pleasant Grove and the entrepreneurial spirit represented by our core of local independent businesses. And whereas the individual decisions every community member makes today affect the future Pleasant Grove. And whereas Pleasant Grove's local independent business help preserve the uniqueness of the community and give us a sense of place. And whereas Pleasant Grove, Pleasant Grove's core of independently owned businesses give back to this community in goods, services, time and talent. And whereas the health of Pleasant Grove's economy depends on our support of businesses owned by our friends and neighbors. And whereas Pleasant Grove's independent business owners and employees enrich community members' shopping experiences with their knowledge and passion. Therefore, as we celebrate Independence Week two thousand sixteen, we acknowledge that the ability to choose the direction of Pleasant Grove lies within each of us. Now therefore, I, Mike Daniels, Mayor of Pleasant Grove, do hereby proclaim the week of July first through seventh two thousand sixteen as Independence Week and salute our community members and locally owned independent businesses who are integral to the unique flavor of Pleasant Grove and honor their effort to make Pleasant Grove the place we want to live and work. Comments, questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, make a motion, making a proclamation declaring July first through the seventh two thousand sixteen as local first Utah's Independence Week.
I'll second. We have a motion by Eric and a second by Ben, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Item H is to consider for approval an extension for a twenty-one lot plat of Pleasant Heights, Plat B, located at approximately two hundred south and Loder Ave in the R one nine zone. Does anybody have the remote for the projector?
White. There's a remote here, is this the one?
Perfect, can you hit HDMI two?
You know, the Dolby sound check, that's, you know, that's what we should do every time Marty stands up.
I can arrange that.
I know you can.
All right. This is the Pleasant Heights Plat B subdivision. This project was approved last year. We held a pre-construction meeting for this project on June seventeenth. According to our current practice, well, the ordinance indicates that there's a twelve month period to completion of any project that's approved in the city. And we've calculate that date from the date of the pre-construction meeting or the date they begin construction on the project. So we're now beyond that one year and the developer is here requesting an extension to complete those improvements. And I'd like to turn some time over to him. I don't know exactly what he's requesting yet as far as a timeframe on that, but turn the time over to him and let him explain, what would he like to explain on that?
Good evening. I would just start by, you know, obviously no one wants to get the project done faster than I do.
Please state your name.
Oh, Matt Robinson.
Matt Robinson.
Whole development group, yeah. Obviously, the, the project's been less than ideal up till now. We, we didn't take it through the city originally. We just came in and bought it and, you know, normally when we buy a development and there's final approval, you're hoping that's the real final approval. Well, it's been the perfect storm of the projects need to be, you know, it's needed to be re-engineered five times. You know, there's been, you know, bad weather. It's been, it's kind of like the ideal storm. And so I'll take some of the blame as, as, as management, but our improvement contractor has obviously taken longer than we would hope. We did a project with Richens right before this in Lehigh and we were in and out in less than a hundred days. And so that's what we're typically used to. And so there's been friction between the improvement contractor and the, and the, and the inspectors. There's been weather, there's been re-engineering. There's a lot of things that have happened that's less than ideal. I'll take blame for not stepping in sooner. A lot of times with the improvement contractor, we just hope that he's doing his job and working things out. And so Marty's been wonderful to work with the last little while and he's, it's made a big difference with him kind of stepping in. And so I just kind of wanted to give you what the timeframe was and what we were hoping to accomplish just here shortly. So right now, all the curb and gutter is in and we have our final, we basically have the green light to put sidewalks in, which we have scheduled with Commander Concrete this Friday. That's kind of the big thing. Once sidewalks go in, then a lot of, a lot of other things can move. There's a power pole, the, the next big thing that we need to work out is there's a pole right in the middle of Loder Avenue that we need to get out of the way. We've worked, we're working with Century Link, Ryan's the engineer there. I've contacted him. He's giving me, I spoke to him earlier this afternoon. It's really hard to pin him down. It's a little bureaucratic, but he promised me that in three weeks, we could have that pole moved.
Matt, can I just pause you for a second?
Sure.
It sounds to me like you've got a project that you're actively working on. I mean, I drove by there the other day. I see the dirt piles there. They've got to be twenty feet above the earth right now. They're twenty above the road. You, you guys are like moving.
Now we are. It's moving a lot better. Yeah, we've, we've never stopped the pro, we've never completely stopped.
It has been stopped. The dirt piles have been there for almost like months.
But according to what he's describing, I mean
Sure, there's, there's been start and stops, but it's, it's never been a period of
I drive that road multiple times a day. No workers there for weeks.
So you see it a little differently.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, because you live in that area, right?
I drive it multiple times a day.
See, and I don't, so I only see when I pass through the area. We, I'm sorry, we can't take public input. I'm really sorry. I feel bad even saying that, but it's the reality of the situation.
No, and I hundred, I a hundred percent agree. It's been, it's been less than ideal. We do, we do developments in other cities and again, in Lehigh, we were in and out in ninety something days. We did one in Murray and so it's, it's obviously not, and with us paying eight thousand dollars a month in interest, there's no one more motivated than we are, obviously.
But what's the difference between Pleasant Grove and those other two cities as to why you're able to accomplish the project more quickly?
Couple thing, couple things. Mostly, I mean, I'll just speak frankly and like I said, there's, there's blame everywhere. I'm not, I'm not trying to deflect blame because again, we could have managed it better and I'll, I'll take full responsibility for that. One of the things that makes a big difference is normally when you get final plat approval, you can just go and just go crazy and get things done. Well, at every single step, we've had to re-engineer it. So we'll get halfway through something and then the city will say, you know, I'm not trying to cast Dagan. A lot of times would be like shut the whole thing down. We need to re-engineer Loder Avenue. And it's like, okay, we've done that three times. And so there were five sets of engineering revisions that have happened over the last eight months. And so we've been trying to be patient. Normally, when you get your final approval, you can just do it. And so there's been a lot of engineering delays and there's been a lot of friction between Richens, the improvement contractor and the city, and the city, and the city inspectors. I don't want to go into that, but there's been a lot of delays because of on both, on both sides. That's been a big thing. The other big thing has been weather, trying to do the project through the winter. The soils report when we bought it stated that we would be able to use all of that dirt and it would be fine. And the city has come back and said, you can't use any of the dirt, bring in fill for everything else. And so there's been a lot of clay. And so we would try and grade the road and then the rain would wash it out and then it would take seven. Normally, if you're working in normal soil, you know, two days later, you're fine. But with the clay, you know, it just, the weather kept shutting it down too. And then, you know, management, I could have managed it better. There's no question about that. So there's just, it's been kind of the perfect storm of engineering inspections, our improvement contractor, management, weather and everything like that. But I, now that we're kind of in the final stages of it, I just, here's kind of what I was expecting as far as a timeframe. Commander Concrete is scheduled to go in on Friday to finish the sidewalks. Century Link is tentatively committed in three weeks to move the power pole. Staker Parsons is two to three weeks out. The reason why I haven't put them on a schedule is because the city has wanted us to move the pole and then do asphalt. I've presented that we could, I could do asphalt immediately. I've presented that we could, I could do asphalt immediately and we could just barricade that pole so it's just done. And then when Century Link comes to move the pole, we can move the pole and patch it. I'll do either one. But asphalt's kind of been held up by Century Link. But speaking to Marty this afternoon, I think I'm just, we're just going to schedule. And again, he can correct me if I'm wrong because it was through email. So please, please correct me if I'm wrong. But my thought was, and it could be wrong, was let me get Staker Parsons basically on the schedule for three and a half weeks from right now. If Century Link can live up to that obligation of getting there in three weeks, great. If they can't, we could still put it in and then just have the barricade there for a little bit. That way I can at least get something on the schedule and something's moving instead of just waiting and waiting and waiting. After that, essentially after the pole and after the asphalt and after the sidewalks, there's going to be some earth movement, which won't have much of a, you know, which won't be too big a deal. That's kind of on the internal lots. And then we just need to schedule Rocky Mountain Power. Rocky Mountain Power, usually you trench the power conduits after the sidewalks go in. And so our plan was right when sidewalks go in, take a couple of days, let the sidewalks cure, and then start trenching to put them on the schedule just to get it all wrapped up. And so, it'll definitely be this summer. I mean, 60 to 90 days, I want to be in and out.
So when did you acquire this, this project?
Basically, a couple of weeks before the pre-construction meeting, last summer.
Date? June?
Fifteenth.
May, I mean, late May, late, late May is probably when I bought it.
This is actually labeled, this is labeled June 12th of 15.
Right.
It says received, but the only one received is engineering on this one. I don't see an approved date. Well, I do see a final approval. So when was it approved? When was he given the 12-month start clock?
It starts from the date of the pre-construction, which is June 17.
I don't know the exact date, but we were going, the closing got delayed back and forth because we kept insisting for final approval from the people that were taking it through the city and we bought it from. And so it happened in that late spring, March, April, May-ish. And we, we closed basically on it and then went fairly quickly into the pre-construction meeting within a month or so.
So when you say you want to be in and out in 60 to 90 days, what does that mean? Like the houses are done, the holes are dug? What are we talking about?
I'm talking about all the improvements. And so, like I said,
The development.
The most, yeah, the most, yeah. So all of the, all the underground improvements are more or less done. And so, the big, the big things that need to be done are sidewalks, move the, move the Century Link pole and asphalt. Those are the ones that are going to have a big effect on everybody. And then we can clean up the roads and everything like that. And then after that, all the stuff's internal, trenching Rocky Mountain Power and just moving the dirt around on the actual lots and grading it out.
So what's the timeframe for the whole project?
Sorry?
The entire, like, fully done, fully graded?
Let me ask this slightly.
Homes being constructed or, I mean...
Yeah, let me ask a question related to what she's saying. I guess you're in front of us now for an extension, right? And I'd like to know, what does the extension include? Are we talking about development? Or are we talking about completed selling homes?
It's only for the development improvements.
Just development improvements? So streets, sewer, water?
Correct.
Curb, gutter, sidewalk?
It is not anything to do with the actual development of the homes.
Homes.
There's no deadline in the city ordinances for completing the subdivision.
And there's no deadline on this or on the? The selling of the homes.
There is a deadline on what you're looking at. That's why they're asking for the extension. There is no deadline on the sale of the homes.
Okay, so, given that clarification to Councilmember Limone's question about when you're going to be done, I guess, when are you going to be done with this? When are you going to be done with the development work?
60 to 90 days. I would say 90 days will be safe.
So, what's 90 days from today?
The biggest, the biggest factor right now is Century Link. Because I can schedule everyone out just fine. They're all ready to go. I've just, Century Link is the only one that won't commit to an exact date. He keeps saying, but today he said, I will try and get this done in three weeks.
So, so you're looking for a 90-day extension, September 20th?
Correct.
That, is that the bottom line?
Correct.
You're saying for all improvements?
All improvements.
Yeah, all the development.
And then another, what, three months, 90 days for homes to be completed?
Homes isn't part of this. That's why I asked the question.
But I, but what are we looking at for the entire development?
They aren't required. They can sell those homes and, or the lots in two to three years and build on those at that time. The lots actually can be sold at any time after subdivision plat.
I was given the impression that the lots had already been sold.
If they have, they can still proceed on their own schedule.
So it's not a one developer coming in and doing the lots? It's people can build?
I don't know if you're planning to do them all yourself or if you're selling them.
We're a custom home builder. We're also handcrafted homes. And so we, we have not sold any lots right now. And so eventually, I mean, if I was, if I was guessing, I bet you we'll build about two-thirds of the home in there, homes in there and sell five or six of the lots to people who want to get their own builders.
So what happens if, if you don't meet the extension? Then what?
So we currently, we currently have bonding that they've submitted and we have an irrevocable letter of credit to complete the improvements. And we could take that money now and go do that and complete that. It would take us longer than 60 to 90 days to do that. And, and so I would recommend that we accept an extension so that they can proceed forward and get this done. I think they have a schedule that is doable. I think at the point that they're in, they can get it done in that 60 to 90 days. I would say that Loder Ave has to be done before school starts. So we're talking in the next 60 days, we have to have Loder Ave back and, and improve completely.
So you're really talking 60 days, not 90?
Yeah. But understand that, that once the roads are done, I mean, really, we have a final completion walkthrough. They get a punch list of items. Those items have to be completed by the final completion deadline as well. So I think 60 days to really get to that, where we're holding the final walkthrough would be great. Give them a little bit of time to finish up any minor items that might need to be finished from that final walkthrough. And then I would say 90 days is accepted.
So what has to be done that's going to affect school traffic?
Loder Ave.
In 60 days?
Kids walk home right there and there's...
Right. That's what I'm asking. What has to be done?
So the sidewalk will be done this Friday. The road improvements will be, need to be constructed for access along there, safe access, for both vehicular and pedestrian access along there.
And the, and the Century Link pole.
We put down our motion, August 23rd for a road and then September 20th for the rest. I don't know.
Yeah, I think that we should. I mean, if you want my thoughts on this, I, I drive this area. This is my neighborhood too, where my kids go to elementary school. And we get lots of calls about this project, as you're, as you're well aware. But, but Marty's been great at talking through some of the issues and talking. And we have the option. We've got more, more leverage now than we ever do because we could put you guys in default and take the bonding. But, but the better solution is to let you get it finished. But because we had our time of maximum leverage, it's the time to put in specific timeframes for subparts if we want to make sure this process is managed better in the next 60 to 90 days than it has been for the last 12 months. So that would be my recommendation. In fact, I'm happy to make that motion. But I think we want to put in, divide it up a little bit, 60 days to do certain parts that we need for school and then 90 days for the remaining pieces.
And then interior.
And maybe.
Post-school, school start, September 1st.
If we could be a little general on the motion, as far as those things that affect Loder with the school.
Second South and Loder Avenue, I'd say within the next 60 days.
The interior, I think we could probably be okay with that.
Let's, let's talk about a couple of things that could happen now going on with the project. One is the manhole cover as you enter the project, which I think Marty asked for some road base to put around that because people are hitting that and destroying their car.
Okay.
So there was some road base put in. It was a pretty poor job. People are still hitting that. I actually have a neighbor who had their dog in the back. The dog flew out after they hit that and got bloodied up on the road from flying out after hitting that manhole cover. So the manhole cover, equipment off the road as much as possible. There were signs and I, if you're the manager, you can talk to the contractor, signs and garbage thrown in neighbors' bushes and yards. I mean, it's, it's a mess. And it's also a hazard. There was a metal pole sticking out in the road that was a movable piece of equipment, but they're not cleaning up after themselves. There's just equipment left out.
Where's, can you give us an idea of what parts you're talking about on these?
So...
Is it on Second South?
Nope, it's on Loder.
So Loder's here.
This is where the raised manhole is, right here on Loder Ave, right at the entrance on 300 South. And then up here along this road. It is a fairly narrow road because they've put improvements in there and they've constructed back. There's only about 24 foot of pavement there, enough for two lanes if the barricades are wide enough for access. And what's happened is if they, as they started construction, some of those barricades have been pushed out into the road, which is pushing some of the northbound traffic into the southbound traffic lane. And so, the idea is that after Sid mentioned this to us, we went up there and talked with them about widening that. And they have done that. I think it's a little bit better access now. I drove it this morning. As far as keeping that open, it's going to be critical. Now, understand that soon as they get going on this road, they likely will be shutting down the road to get all of the base improvements in. They've got to rip out all the asphalt, take it down and bring it back up so that we get our full road section.
So you're saying the sidewalk part of this by this Friday. What about the road?
So, again, we've got the pole issue. So I would say that give them the 60 days to make sure that all these improvements on Loder Avenue and Second South are completed and give them 90 days to final completion.
Counsel?
But in the meantime, can we address the other issues that are happening while the construction's going on?
Just let me know. I'd love to.
I'm meeting with the contractor in the morning as well. I'll make sure the sidewalks are ready to go. I did address with him this last week as well on the manhole. He assured me that would get done and it's still not done, so.
So I think, I think what Sid's bringing up a good point. There are safety issues that should be contained and dealt with as a project is being constructed, right? And then there's the completion. So, we need to deal with that. Okay, thank you very much. Alright, counsel, any other discussion?
On a lighter note, I really, really enjoyed the curb and gutter machine. That was really fun to watch. It is amazing. So for those of you who haven't seen the automated self-leveling, sorry, I brought it sip a couple of times. It was really fun.
We wear your gardening outfit at this time.
I just hope you can understand the frustration of the people that live in that area because we drive on it every day. And it's, it's kind of been a nightmare for a year. I mean, I had a resident asking about this when school started last August. And it's been unsafe for the kids walking home, not just the kids at Valley View, but also the high schools that go up 200 South. And people ask, when is it going to be done? I mean, there's not even a hole dug. And so there's just no end in sight for the people that live around there. And so it's just become very, very frustrating.
I 100% agree.
And it's kind of a double-edged sword because if we, if we don't allow you the extension, then we're stuck and we've got to figure out a way to finish it or we do anything with the bond. So it's kind of a no-win. But hopefully, moving forward, we can get this done.
I think we're in a good spot right now. Marty's doing a fantastic job of helping us streamline it and giving us exactly what we need. And so, we'll work to do our part. I agree.
And I'm, and I'm anti, and I'm anti-patch. So, let's just wait for the pole to be removed and then do it. So.
I'll just say, Century Link's about the only thing out of my control. It's just, it's kind of a black hole when you work with some of these lots. And so, like I said, with Staker, with Commander, with all these things, I can schedule them. They just say, I'll let you know in our engineering department. I'll let you know in the construction department, get around to it. It's the one thing a little out of my control, even though I've been calling them just about every day to try and push them, so.
Okay.
So anything, the city has any influence there to help?
I, I actually called them to emphasize this and gave them some names, so.
Okay.
Hopefully it can move forward.
Alright, are we comfortable moving to a motion?
Yes.
Okay, who wants to make the motion?
I'll do it. I'll make the motion that we approve an extension for 21 lot final plat of Pleasant Heights, Plat B, located approximately 200 South and Loder Avenue in the R19 zone.
We're specific on the...
You want the specifics in there?
With specific 60-day requirement that the project infrastructure is completed by the first day of school, which is, are we sure it's August 23rd?
Oh, I just picked 60 days out.
Oh, 60 days out from today's date.
So, the infrastructure that affects the school kids on Second South and Loder needs to be in within 60 days. The remainder of the infrastructure on the interior of the property has 90 days.
Has 90 days, as noted by the city attorney.
Okay.
And seconded by the city attorney, I mean, with, no, as her word.
Which council member is seconding this?
I am.
I am. Thank you. Alright, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, good luck. We don't want you to give the impression we don't want you. We want you, we want you to finish. That's all we want.
We all do.
Okay.
Well, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Okay.
Alright. Okay, item I, 10I, is to consider awarding single-track trails the bid for the Valley Vista Trail Loop A multi-use trail project. Dion?
Back, second go-around on this one. So, if you remember, a couple of months ago, we went out to bid for this project. We actually approved sagebrush trails, the, the award. And due to some personnel emergencies and accidents that they had, they had to give up the bid. So, since then, we've gone back out to bid. The bid closed last Thursday. And single-track was the single bidder on the project. They are out of Calif, or Colorado. And their bid came in at $61,100. Our budget is $50,000 for this line item in the, in the trail. This leaves us with a couple of options, I guess. Option one is to hold off, rebid late winter, early, early spring, and see if we can get a better bid on this. Or we could, I could ask for additional funds from the impact fees and see this project through this year. We're making great headway. Today was the first day that the trail crew was onboard and digging. And they completed 500 feet today. So, it's pretty impressive. But this is, this portion of the trail is the most technical to ride and run and also to build. This is the portion that I don't think I would feel comfortable trying to, to build without a professional there, so.
So, the services, this was the number two bid, right?
This was the only bid.
On the second go-around?
On the second go-around, yes. And we, we kind of figured that with the amount of bids. I mean, we had two bids to begin with on the first bid, on the first go-around. It's just, this time of year bidding these type of contractors, they're already scheduled out there a year, so.
So, this was not one of the bidders on the, on the first round?
No.
So this is a new bidder that threw it in and they're willing to do it this year? Otherwise...
Otherwise, we, we wait.
With a, with a rush fee?
Marty?
$10,000.
Not necessarily. So, so the contractor who bid the first time was in-state contractor, which means he could mobilize his crews much more easily than this company coming out of Colorado who brings all his equipment, all his manpower, houses them for the 16 days. And so the mobilization is, is a big factor in this. So his price at $4.25 a foot is, is in range of what we normally see on a trail project.
Okay.
So, couple of questions. What was the first bid amount? Do you recall?
I want to say it was like $39,000 for the, $39,800, something like that for the first bid.
So this is like 150% increase or more in terms of, we went from 40 to 61, 100. The budget was 50.
Budget's 50, correct. We, I mean, even if we bid this out late next year, or sorry, early next spring, we still take the chance of it being in, you know, higher than what we anticipated in the budget if it's an out-of-state contractor.
Do we have a sense of industry and whether there's a likelihood we would get an in-state contractor next spring or?
I, I don't know. I would hope so. But I don't know that we would.
Did the original contractor back out just for a period of time or back out permanently?
Permanently. So he had some personnel issues as far as emergencies that he could not, he's actually kind of worried that he's not going to be able to complete his current contracts he has going right now with other cities and developments, so.
This may be a legal question, Tina, but we don't have any... This may be a legal question, Tina, but we don't have any remedies if a person backs out of a bid after it's hit that stage. There's no...
Well, we, we, and we never signed the con, we never signed any contract or anything. I mean, basically, we approved it, and we got an email like the next, or a phone call like the next day saying, hey, "Had one guy slice his hand open, he's out for six months. I had another family, uh, another employee that has a family member out of this country who's diagnosed with cancer and has a month, and he's going to be gone." That was actually the, the builder that was going to come in and do our trails, so.
Okay, well, those are definitely things that we can't, uh, necessarily foresee. So, counsel, I guess the question is, is this project of a time-sensitive nature that you want to approve a bid that is...
Twelve thousand.
A hundred and fifty percent more than the last one.
Ten thousand.
Dollars.
Eleven thousand.
Eleven thousand, eleven thousand, one hundred dollars over, um, the budgeted amount, in lieu of waiting and seeing if you can rebid this at a later time and bring the costs, or the, see if you can get the costs down within the lower amount of the budget.
Something to, to mention is this, the way that the trail is designed, we're starting at the bottom with the current, uh, trail manager, right? They're working their way up. This Loop A is the up. It's the biggest, it's two and a half miles of the six and a half miles that there is, um, most technical. If we don't approve, not that we have to, but if we don't, there's not going to be the connectivity to like the Bonneville Shoreline Trail. We're going to be missing a gap. So, it may change our plans with the current trail manager to come up with something that we can get some type of connectivity with the Bonneville Shoreline Trail, so it will be...
Until we can finish this.
It will leave a big gap, yeah.
Okay, discussion?
I have a couple of, uh, questions. Um, so, what is this duty, the impact fee budget? I mean...
It removes a hundred and, or sorry, an extra eleven thousand. An extra eleven thousand dollars.
So, just tell me how you feel about that.
Well...
When you're looking, you look, so Dion, I don't know what your, I don't know what projects you have still yet to do. I don't know how you feel about your impact budget.
Impact fees have so many regulations that go with them that really, I have nothing on the board currently to utilize those fees for. I, is there things that the parks need and some of the facilities need? Yes, they do, but they don't meet the requirements for impact fees. The projects that have been entertained by staff and counsel from football, lacrosse, soccer, those types of things, the amount of money that we have in impact fees...
Aren't going to touch it.
It's not going to touch it, you know, your millions of dollars.
You're talking about suggestions that have been made?
Correct.
But nothing has been approved?
Correct, yeah.
Right now, this is the project that you have approved, and you ran into the snag.
Right.
Uh, what does that do to our budget?
So, I was just going to say that, um, after the budget amendment we did last meeting, or the meeting before, I can't remember when it was, um, we were at, um, approximately a hundred and sixty-six thousand with making that amendment that we discussed for the multi-use trial. So, this would take it down to one-fifty, but this was a few weeks ago, and so, we're constantly bringing monies in, but it wouldn't put us below a hundred and fifty thousand in the parks' impact fee. And that's if we didn't collect anything else in all of June.
Is there a requirement or anything to maintain a certain level?
Oh, no, no, you're, you just need to spend it within the six-year timeframe, so there's nothing that, you know, what you can have or not have in there. But that's about where to put you, is a hundred and fifty thousand if we approve the increase.
Remaining, right?
Yeah, yeah, remaining, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions, discussion, counsel?
Probably speaking, my concern with this one, I don't think it's staff's fault or contractor's fault, but the perception of this project is that we're getting less and less for more and more money, and that it's the very epitome of what's wrong with the way government can operate on some things.
I don't think the scope has changed at all. The plan and design hasn't changed.
Well, from the, from the original pitch, we've got a lot less trail than we originally talked about in, a year ago, when it was seventeen miles, and now it's six and a half.
Six and a half, you're right.
So, that, that changed more than cuts it in half, and then the, the budget ballooned from zero to quarter million, and then now it's over budget again. So, broadly speaking, I have those kinds of concerns, because I hear constantly from the public about those kinds of concerns. My, my instinct is to find a way to get it back under the budget on this particular line item and, and figure out if there's a way to make that happen, so, um, that, that would be my suggestion for this, Donnie.
So, when you look at other projects in the city, Discovery Park, Manila, Pond, Parks, Shannon Ballfield, this really doesn't fill in comparison to other projects in the city. But what we're getting from this project is going to affect equestrians, hikers, bikers, youth, adults, all ages in our community, and bringing it to other outside communities. The amount that we're spending on this project is quite a, a different comparison compared to the other projects in the city, which I find interesting that we haven't had the backlash for some of the other projects like we have with this, which leads me to believe that this is more of a personal vendetta against a certain person involved with the project, which is unfortunate, but I'm okay. There's, this happens in projects, it happens with streets, it happens with, we come back and there's, as the mayor said, there's been a snag that we now need to address. And waiting an entire year to hope that we might get a lesser price and putting the entire project on hold, and we've had, uh, you know, volunteers up there, people are excited about it, enthusiastic. Um, there might be other things in the long, the long budget that we save money for and that we come in over and that we need to find some grants, we need to find some donations that we can work around. But this has happened with other projects as well. This is no different. I don't see any benefit in waiting, because we don't know if we're going to be able to get a lesser price, and all it's going to do is put the project off a year longer. So, I'm in favor of making the amendment. We have the park impact fees to pay for it. We still have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in park impact fees, so I'm fine with moving forward. And I think the epitome of government as well is not making any progress. And I've seen this happen with this project, where we're now three years out on a bike project, and other communities have done it in less than a year. So, that's the other epitome to me of government, is making no progress on a project like this. So, I'm fine with making the budget amendment for eleven thousand.
Lynn, you've, you've dealt with, um, rebids throughout your career, and you've had mixed results. Share, share some of your wisdom as far as when you postpone, you try it again. What's your rate of success in bidding? I mean, you only have two bidders the first time, now we only have one.
Yeah, and you're going to have that this time of year. See, these, uh, and most of these contractors will bid, and that's the way we bid, as one of the bigger companies in the city, in the state. As you'll bid in the spring to fill your work, and you'll take it, you'll always get your best prices in the spring. Uh, and you do, you get it out early, you beat everybody else to the draw, and you become, uh, very successful normally. I'd say ninety-ten on the, on the success ratio. Uh, I think you'd have a good chance of getting it, but you still are taking the chance. This is kind of a specialized thing. You know, this isn't like bidding a road that everybody in, in the state's going to bid. This is a specialty item that, that could fall apart on you. The thing that, you'd, you've got a good shot at getting a cheaper price.
If you wait?
If you wait. But, you know, on the other hand, you've, you know, you've got ten thousand dollars that is going to be difficult. You need to get it working here pretty quick, or you're going to take a chance on losing the ten thousand dollars.
Explain what you mean by that, Lynn, I'm not sure.
Well, you're going to, you keep dallying around with this impact money, and you're going to be giving it all back.
Well, I don't have plenty of time with the impact money.
How much time do we have?
Got six years.
Yeah.
No.
Know when this money was collected, so I don't know when the six years started.
Yeah.
That's, that's the word I've heard, ma'am.
But we trace, I assume. I mean, the only logic what I do is to spend the oldest money first, right? I mean, what we've got left is probably accumulated in the last few months, right?
Yeah, the one-fifty that we have left, um, would be uncollected in FY sixteen.
So, we have...
So, that would, that, we'd be okay there.
Yeah.
All right.
And I, I think I would talk to the man that's got to make her work.
Dion?
Just do it.
Deo, you're in the hot seat.
So, Dion, there's no one else we can get bids from at this point?
I sent out both go-arounds, the same bid advertisement invitations to, I want to say, fourteen different bidders.
Oh, wow.
And actually went to two national, or state and national organizations for them to advertise this. We received two on the first one and one on the second.
They're just busy, or?
They're just busy. They're, they're booked, and...
Well, this portfolio...
Single Track could actually make it, and, and their timeframe was sixteen days to come in and complete this. If I remember, Sagebrush was a little bit longer for the completion. This gentleman's bringing a full crew, where Sagebrush was going to bring one person, so.
So, we're getting more, we're paying more, but we're getting more for the service.
Have we actually verified this, uh, portfolio? I mean, this resident?
Yes, I've actually met and talked with this gentleman.
Speed, um, he's doubling down on people to get it done in the timeframe that...
Right.
Originally was committed.
So, the other bids may have been a little bit less, but we're going to be able to get it done more quickly with this?
I, in a timeframe manner, yes, but for what we were looking for this year, it wa, all would have been the same. Because we want the trail completed by September, and both companies could do that. It was just the way that they managed their crew, or crews differently.
I'm waiting for the blood sugar to kick in, so I don't look any...
Are you, are you close to that?
You want a Pepsi?
So, have, have we tried negotiating with this other bidder? Looking down on price if he sees the other bids, knowing that we could...
I could possibly go back, and I haven't negotiated. I mean, it's, it's a sealed bid-type thing, and so, we don't generally do that. I don't anyway. Maybe Marty does, I...
That's a poor habit.
You don't like to do that. Um, but, you know, I could go back and, and see what he could accomplish for the fifty. The, the biggest cost, honestly, is just to mobilize. Not, not the biggest cost, but it is a big cost for him to mobilize his people.
For Seattle?
Colorado.
Do you remember what the per-foot cost was of the first bid?
I want to say about four, it was three eighty-five. I don't. It, it was in the three dollar, upper three-dollar range.
This bid was four twenty-five.
Four twenty-five a foot. The, and one of the differences too is, is the other contractor was going to do it by hand, like we're doing right now with our trail manager, and this company brings in mechan, uh, mechanic, mechanized, mechanical, yes, mechanical. Machinery, small machinery, but specialized for trail building.
I'm just saying if he knew, if he wanted to come down on price, knowing if we chose him now, and he got the work now, as compared to waiting until next spring, and knowing that we may not use him if we wait till next spring.
Interesting point.
I'll make a motion that we instruct staff to go back and negotiate, if possible.
Are you going to make that a motion, or are we finished discussing?
If there's, yeah, if there's no further discussion, I don't want to preemptively end discussion if there's more.
I guess my big concern from, from seeing this as a development uh, is we're completing a, a big portion of the trail on the bottom end, the bottom half.
When will this be usable? Let's say we do this right now, we, let's say we authorize it to go forward. When is the project usable?
Start of school.
Um, the overall project, the end of August. The trail that they're building today, and probably have complete, the loop, sorry, the, the loop that they're building, and probably complete this week or the first part next week, next week.
And if we were to delay, obviously, the rest of the project would be whenever we get that next part finished.
And, and my concern is the connectivity. If I don't have a good trail system that, that connects the Bonneville to the lower end, then we're going to have illegal trails built through the year, and then we have more repair work than we currently do now, because they'll just make their own way down through there. Right now, we have it posted off, but the, they're building on the other side of the, the Bonneville Shoreline Trail currently on the forest service, and they'll just do it, so. I, I just want to make sure we have some connectivity. So, I could, I could definitely go back and see what he would be willing to do for the fifty.
But we don't have a guarantee that the other bidders would say we will do it for this price next spring in twenty-seventeen?
Absolutely not.
No. You have to either bid that out or negotiate a different deal.
Which could come in, obviously, the same, less, more, or higher.
Or lower, yeah. We don't know. It's a crystal ball. I think the question is, we are committed, we've already done some work, we've laid out some money, we've run into a snag. This is not a life-threatening situation. It's not a, a core infrastructure. It is an addition to augment what we're doing. On the other hand, we don't want to be foolish and just keep increasing the amount that we spend on something above and beyond what we're budgeted for, if there's methods and ways for us to bring the, bring the project in on budget or less. I, I don't think we're in danger of not having the resources, but just having the resources doesn't mean you should just go out and spend resources. It's, it's using resources wisely. It doesn't sound like we're going to have to return this money to anybody anytime soon. We're up on the amount of project development work that's being done. This money probably has at least five years or more left on it. So, I think this is a, this is kind of a, a preference call on the part of the council. Do you want to move forward now with what you have in front of you? Or do you want to kind of take your time and see if you can come in at a, a price that's within what was originally spec? And it's, and it's really a choice.
And that's your problem with Dion going back and asking, what, fifty thousand, what that can accomplish with him? I really don't.
I do know he's anxious to know. I mean, he has other jobs that he can schedule into for this time period. And this was like a two-week period that he was down and didn't have a project. I don't want that to weigh in, but he has mentioned to me that, you know, when will I know, when will he know the results of the council's decision? I told him we'd know tomorrow, so. But I can definitely go back and ask. Won't hurt.
Any more questions?
Sounds good.
So, should we just then, instead of acting on this, just give direction to staff to go have that conversation, and then come back with information?
Yeah.
Before we take any action? You okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, as a motion or just direction?
It's cleaner if you just do a motion.
Okay.
I make a motion to direct staff to move forward to talk to, who is it?
Single Track?
Single Track.
Negotiate?
Negotiate.
Order.
Whatever you want to call it.
Will do. And, and the goal is to get it, to get it down to within what our budget was.
Okay, we'll do that. Thank you.
So, we have a motion. Sorry.
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Fine, thank you. Thanks, Deo.
Does he, is he going to be able to move forward if this guy negotiates now?
Yes, to bring it back, because we haven't approved a...
Do you want to include that in a motion?
We can put it back on the next agenda right after he finds out.
I, I think my recommendation is we'll put it on as an agenda item for next week as well, and that way, we can take final action.
Okay, and that's going to be on a Wednesday rather than a Tuesday because of the primary election. Okay. All right, item eleven A is a discussion on establishing a transportation utility fund and enacting a transportation fee to sup, to fund the transportation cost. Um, I think the council has seen an email that I sent to staff with a list of questions that I felt we had been asked by the public to resolve, um, questions about, is this a tax, is this a fee? And if it's going to be a tax, make the language and the wording and everything about it to become a tax. If it's going to be a fee, fix it so that the formulas and the implementation method comes back as a fee. Um, what is the, what is the implementation process? I mean, there were a whole bunch of questions that needed to be answered. I don't think we're going to, we're going to get all of that done today or next week, but I think that we need to continue the dialogue. And so, I asked staff to come prepared tonight to kind of tell us where are we at with these, these questions that the citizens have, have raised on this whole thing. And I think three of you have prepared presentations or comments on this. Is that correct?
I have.
Okay.
I have something.
Okay.
Marty, you're the third.
Marty.
Marty, get ready. Get ready, Marty.
Marty, where's your...
Nothing done.
So, Mayor and Council, looking at the questions that the mayor posed in his email as well as some of the discussion items that we've had as we've discussed this possible implementation of a transportation utility fee. We've discussed a number of items. The main one that Councilmember Stanley brought up was the issue of the tax versus a fee. And that one obviously needs some further investigation. The mayor has directed us to make sure that whatever we decide to move forward with, everything's in line with if, whether we're going to implement it as a tax or whether we're going to implement it as a fee. I can tell you that I have been in contact with Andrew Jackson at Mountain Land Association of Governments. He did a presentation on this issue and it looks preliminarily like we are on the right track in utilizing it as a fee, not a tax. He's going to provide me some additional information, which will require some additional research. But, basically, the idea is, is if you're implementing it as a fee, you need to attach it to a user rate and you need to make sure that you're not exceeding the revenue that you need to actually fund the activity that you're setting aside the money for. Currently, we appear...
You don't have to risk it that, right?
Yeah. Currently, we're in line with those criteria. We're not attempting to raise more money. In fact, we're attempting to raise less money than we need to actually fully fund the road problem. We have tied it preliminarily to usage. We've paid for a study to be done. We do have numbers showing intensity of use for the various types of land uses from residential to commercial. Those details, though, still need to be worked on in terms of actually coming up with definitive numbers and making sure that whatever we decide or you decide to implement is actually tied to a steady, a steady number of intensity of use. We don't want to be arbitrary or capricious. We don't want to just say, well, we're going to charge residents this amount because this is what we think they'll go for and then we're going to charge businesses X amount because we don't want to overcharge them. So, every, any number we choose needs to tie back to a rational basis for using that number. So, we're going to continue to work on that. I've got some additional information, like I said, coming from Andrew at MAG. He did a PowerPoint, I believe, for your organization or your group meeting. There are some additional sources of information that he gave me over the phone. There's a National Tax Association chart that he gave me a reference to that I need to look at. So, we're going to be continuing on with doing the appropriate research in order to answer the question and to feel comfortable as we are moving forward. Once we finally get to an ordinance that we have chosen the appropriate mechanism and that we're implementing it correctly as we understand it. The second item was the issue about currently, well, the last time we talked about it, we had the two tiers. We had the residential tier and then we had the, the commercial tier. And the council wanted us to look at breaking that out and looking at at least two different tiers for businesses based on their average trips per day. Scott has put a document, or Denise has put a document in the Dropbox that presents some scenarios of possible fee levels for the various types of businesses and even, I believe, one scenario breaks down the multi-family versus single-family residences for the fee. That is one thing I would note that Andrew mentioned to me on the phone about not just having a single residential fee, but if you've got a fourplex and you're saying that the, each individual house generates a certain number of average trips, that you make sure that your fee is appropriate to that. So, for example, the, the document that I saw, a residence might be the three dollars or four dollars, but a fourplex generates one point five versus what a single family does. And so, you would actually adjust that up or down depending on what you could show the usage to be.
But, we know why if they have the same number of drivers in their home compared to a single-family residence?
I can't answer that tonight. That would be based on the trip study that we would do, that we, that we already have done. And so, we would just have to look at those numbers and that's not my area of expertise, so I apologize.
That's the kind of question that has to be answered.
Yeah. But, that's the kind of stuff that we need to spend a little more time on. The other issue is, we had discussed the exemption of non, or tax-exempt organizations and how we were going to implement that as Pleasant Grove City. Provo has one model that they've chosen to implement. Vineyard also copied that ordinance and they, they have the same model. Some other cities around the state are contemplating this utility fee, road fee, and they have other models that they're looking at. So, one of the things that we want to spend a little bit more time on is finalizing how we want to present the tax-exempt organizations and whether or not they will be exempt from the fee or whether some of them will be and some of them won't be. The other thing we want to spend some time on is education and going out and actually reaching out to these entities and sitting down and having a discussion before we implement the ordinance imposing the fee. So, that's also going to take us some time to, to get to.
And Tina, do you know specifically the cities that have already passed the road user fee? Provo, were there others?
Provo and Vineyard have definitely.
Okay.
Mapleton is under close, I don't know if they've actually adopted it yet, but if they haven't, they're close. I know that Scott has talked to them on the phone and I can tell you, based on anecdotal evidence, I think we've done a much better job in actually researching and tying our numbers to usage than the cities that he's contacted and asked how they arrived at their fee. I believe there's an, also a city in, somewhere up north, in the North Ogden area, that is also considering it and they, they'll be approving it soon. So...
At the meeting that I attended, when I walked in, our logo was on the board. We were being discussed.
Was that good or bad?
Then they started asking me questions and it's a good thing I understood because these guys had prepped. But, there, there were about fifteen cities in the state that were actively pursuing this based on the Provo model. And we were discussing the likelihood of any one of those cities being challenged based on this kind of research and really looking to see if it follows the, the letter of the law on taxes versus fees.
So, I feel comfortable, I feel comfortable in the direction that we've been taking. I feel comfortable that we've been diligent in discovering what we needed to, but we're not ready to present something to the council for your final approval yet. There's still quite a bit of work to be done.
And as part of the research process, can we find out the specifics on those other cities that have already passed theirs? Provo and Vineyard, as far as if they looked at the multi-family compared to single-family residential?
Yes. I know that Provo did. They've got, they've got the same type of study that we have with regard to usage. It's, it's, I would say, we use the same company, so I'm sure it's the same.
Even though we did the same studies, they may have still decided like we were because before we had it divided out and then we ended up combining that. So, can we find out from those cities and even the, even Mapleton, who's looking at the proposed fee right now, kind of what they're doing and...
You mean, how they broke down the businesses?
How they broke it down and businesses and single-family versus multi-family and...
Sure. We can look at that. That's something we can look at.
And then, when, when is Scott going to approach the...
Let's interject a comment.
Okay.
At the same meeting, it was stated that when the legislature found out that this is what Provo was doing and took a look at it, many legislators chose not to say or do anything about it because Provo was a special case and they would not be touched. But, anybody else like us, it's free game. And that was a, I mean, you guys, this is public record, just feel free to go, go Google that thing and listen to the recording. It's, it's very interesting what the sentiments are floating around Capitol Hill and also throughout the state on, on whether or not the state legislature is actually focused on taking care of the infrastructure in the state of Utah. It seems ridiculous to me that a hundred and fifty cities have to spend their time working through all of this detail when there is a mechanism in place and our legislature is afraid to use it. It would solve this problem, but they won't use it because they don't have the backbone to stand up and do anything about it.
Amen.
You can quote me on that. That's exactly how I feel.
That's how I feel.
And then...
Blood sugar's doing you nice. Did your sugar do the kick in yet?
Sorry. The last, the last issue that the public has raised in the public hearing, we heard several people comment on the fact that they want to make sure that the money that is collected, that they know which roads are going to be fixed before they consent to this road fee being enacted. And our first initial response was, well, we have our three-year road plan and they're going to be, the money's going to be used pursuant to the three-year road plan. There are some other options there. There are some options where we could modify the three-year road plan. We could allow some public input on, you know, which roads they think need to be fixed first. I mean, there's, there's just some options there. We don't necessarily have to keep the, keep the priorities to the current three-year road plan. So, we'd like an opportunity to discuss that as staff. To be candid, I had a gentleman come in and speak with me today at the counter and he, you know, his suggestion for that was to form a citizen committee that would meet with staff and also say, okay, you guys think this road and this road and this road need to be fixed per your engineer. We think this road, this road and this road are more important because this is what the people drive on. And so, maybe our, our priority list would come up with some sort of compromise. So, there's just some options there.
Maybe we could actually use our neighborhood committee...
Yeah, we could use our neighborhood committees.
Already established. And then, the people that live in every neighborhood would have someone to go to and have this discussion. We could bring it to the, the neighborhood meetings and kind of work through that.
That worked well last time, you remember?
Did it?
We used them prior on the four point one million bonding.
Oh. I'd forgotten that.
The neighborhood, we had the neighborhood committee and they picked the roads.
I think the, the issue here is the same one that we have as a city with the county and it's the same one that the county has with the state and it's the same one the state has with the feds. Someone on top collects money in the collective interest of a group, but when that money gets re-divvied out, we do this scientific thing of where it's needed most and the people that are being collected from here, here and here never see improvement and yet they have contributed. That has to be resolved somehow. And so, that's kind of the assignment that we gave to the, the staff is to come up with a method where people see improvement during their lifetime.
So, those are the issues that we're working, continuing to work on. The short answer is, I think we've made really good progress. I think we're on the right track based on what I can see in the legal research to answer the question about the fee versus a tax. But, as we're moving forward, of course, we want to make sure that we tie up all the loose ends on that and that everybody feels comfortable with that. We want to do some public outreach. We want to educate the public. We want to allow them to do some, give us some input. Maybe some open houses would be in order. And then, Scott would like some time to approach the tax-exempt organizations on an individual basis and have discussions with them as well. Take their temperature and see if there's some compromise that we can't come to with them as well so that they're not the first in line with the challenge, right?
What's the next step or timeline in the process?
So, the next step is probably, there's not just one next step. I think we're going to have to work on all three or four of those avenues moving forward. And our plan is, is as we come up with more information or ideas or suggestions, we'll put it on the agenda again for another discussion, get some more input from councils, see if you like the direction we're going and then just keep moving forward until we're ready to actually draft an ordinance and create the fund.
So, Scott, has he kind of talked about when he's going to start meeting with the organizations?
He hasn't.
Because that will change the funding.
He hasn't.
Okay.
I haven't, he, he said he wants time to do that, but he hasn't talked about his schedule.
Okay.
And did Provo negotiate with the entities before or after?
Before.
They did before?
Before. A long time before. The mayor took a very active role in public education and in meeting with the tax-exempt organizations. So...
They have big ones.
Yeah.
I know.
That, that reach regional, like the hospital.
Thousands and thousands of trips.
And BYU, I mean, it's not like us where we have a local church that lives in one neighborhood and the people that go there also live in the neighborhood. This is, this is a different animal.
So, I went into a deep, dark depression with the a hundred thousand dollars that we lost. So, can you explain, can you just maybe help me understand, what was the formula?
I think...
I can.
Yeah, I think Tina probably has a problem with that.
Yeah, she attended the meeting.
Because she actually sat on the Legislative Policy Committee meeting.
So, I went to the Legislative Policy Subcommittee meeting last Wednesday and there has, there has to be a little bit of history and it's going to be boring, so hopefully I can explain it to you in, in a fashion that's understandable. In nineteen ninety-seven or nineteen ninety-eight, this legislature did something with the gas tax, which upset the weighted pavement mile formula for rural counties who a large percentage of their roadways are not paved. So, they were going to receive less money now from the state on their B and C road funds because of that action. In order to make sure that they continue to receive at least the same amount of money as they were going to under the former formula, they developed what they called the hold harmless provision or clause in that change. So, that any of those rural counties who, under the new formula, weren't getting the same amount as they were under the old formula, they were going to, they were going to get the first money off the top of the new change in order to make them whole.
They were grandfathered in an, an amount.
Yes. So, there was an amount put in there and I believe it was a hundred and twenty percent of what they should have gotten in nineteen ninety-seven, which was the hold harmless clause. So, the idea was, is those counties would continue to receive at least the same amount as they were entitled to under nineteen ninety-seven law, up to one hundred and twenty percent of that amount, at which time they would no longer be in the hold harmless class and they would be dropped out. So, that's where the hold harmless language started. Then, in two thousand and seven, legislature did something again with the formula and UDOT did something with the formula as well. And so, they carried that hold harmless language forward in two thousand and seven because there was still a large number of rural counties who hadn't even gotten to the, the maximum yet. Well, when the legislature did what they did in twenty fifteen, the idea was, is that most of those counties had already reached their max, their hundred and twenty percent. There were a few that hadn't reached it yet. So, the idea was, in twenty fifteen, that they would, there were like two or three counties, I think, that were still on the hold harmless formula. And so, they wanted to make sure those guys were still held whole, but the idea was, is that it was going to sunset, right? At some point, those, those counties were going to get to their maximum and then there wouldn't be any more hold harmless. So, when we did the transportation funding bill last legislative session, the things were moving forward, everybody was on board with the language, everybody had agreed on how the formula was going to work. And at the last minute, the Utah Association of Counties came and said, oh, by the way, what about this hold harmless thing for the rural counties? We still need to make sure that they're held whole. So, it was represented to everybody that it was just a tweak to the language of the bill and that it wasn't going to have any substantial impact on anything. So, no financial analysis was requested. There was no fiscal note requested from the state legislative body and it basically just went through on this, you know, representation that it was just a tweak. Well, UDOT is the one who's in charge of actually implementing the formula that's put in the state law. When they got around to actually figuring it out the way they do, they figured out that the hold harmless agreement or hold harmless language actually diverted a significant amount of the funds from the cities to the rural counties. And so, the projections that everybody was putting out to us saying, here's what you can expect to get, were not accurate because the UDOT's way of figuring the formula skimmed off a certain percentage of that and sent it to the rural counties first before anybody else got their distribution. So, now that that's been brought to their attention, the league and some of the larger the league and some of the larger stakeholders have contacted the Utah Association of Counties. They're aware of the problem. They've indicated their willingness to sit down and fix it because it was an unintended consequence. They agree that they're not entitled to the windfall. And so it will either be handled in the interim session in July, if possible, or it will be handled for sure in the next legislative session. So we will get the money. It's just not coming when we thought it was going to come. So...
That's good news.
Does that help?
It does.
Okay.
Okay. Any more discussion you want to have tonight on this item?
I am impressed with Mapleton, right? I mean, their citizens are like 80 or 90% okay with a $10 road fee, which, again, if we researched that and see what they did, I mean, it's impressive.
Yeah, my understanding...
It's just smaller.
Right. And this is just anecdotal. So please don't quote me on this. But my understanding is, is the way they went about it was, is they actually did a survey with their citizens and said, we need road money. How much would you pay? And they gave them a choice. And so they picked, they just picked the number based on what their residents said they were willing to pay. So there weren't any studies done. They didn't necessarily tie it to usage. So, and that's my understanding of how they came up with their number. And their citizens are happy with it. They, you know, they said they were willing to pay that amount of money and that's what this, the city's going to implement. So...
Do they implement it as a fee, a tax?
A fee.
On the utility bill?
I don't know that for sure.
Speaking of what citizens are willing to pay, I've had a lot of people advocating to me that we ought to do a voluntary contribution line on our utility bill while we work out the details. How involved would that process be to add just another line of voluntary contribution towards roads?
Uh, I don't think it would be difficult. I'd have to talk to Denise and Scott. But to me, just off the top of my head, what we would do is create that special revenue fund and then put all of those donations into that special revenue fund. That way they're restricted for the use that they were intended or that they were donated for. We haven't ever done that before. So there might be some other legal things I need to look at. But off the top of my head, I think that's how we would do it.
It may be worth looking into. I mean, there may not be much that is generated through that kind of a mechanism, but it ought to be available as an option if there's, if there's an appetite for it.
Sure. We can look at that.
Thanks.
Okay. So the next thing we would do is, as soon as they have, start to have some answers for any of these questions, they'll put it on the agenda and we'll have another update.
Which is, what are we thinking, two or three weeks?
I don't know.
Depends on how long it takes them to get the answers. Some of these are involved questions.
And quite frankly, I think we would like to see some more cities move forward and understand their methodology for moving forward. Like the mayor said, if we're going to be the targets, we want to make sure that we feel safe with moving forward. So...
I think they're waiting for us.
I know. Everybody's waiting to pull the trigger.
It's like Ten Commandments, part two. Attack the little guy. And then you establish a pattern to go attack the big guy.
Well, and I've heard him say, if, if Pleasant Grove can do it, anyone can. So...
Okay. Any other discussions on this item? Thank you for starting the process. Did you have some comments over here?
Yeah. Let me just say one thing. There's been a lot of questions been asked to me about, let's figure out exactly what roads are going to be done. And there's a whole lot of study and analysis that goes into making those recommendations, along with the concept of coordinated road plan. It's not just a road plan. We've got other utilities that we're trying to coordinate to get the best bang for our buck here. And so just understand that as well as there's been a lot of engineering a, a, analysis in that. And, and so what I've experienced with other cities is they're trying to get away from the politics side of when they're doing roads and get more to doing roads that make the most sense at the best value for the city. And we're potentially, as we look at that, and I'm fine working however the council would like me to work, but understand, we're going, we're doing it the opposite direction, saying...
We're glad to hear that because it's not going to follow that way. We're going to come up with a methodology that meets the needs of the people.
Sure.
And it may not end up being as scientific as we've done in the past.
I fully understand that. And I'm not saying that I, we wouldn't work that way. I'm just saying some other cities have kind of worked the opposite way because they don't want the politics making the decisions. They want it more based on the best value. So I, I think just keep that in mind as we go forward. We can look at it, how to do that. But I've seen it done both ways.
Hey, thank you. Denise, did you have anything to add?
No. All I did was provide a summary of the three scenarios, just on one page. And so that's information you've seen before, but it's just all on one page. Before, it was on like five or six. So just the same information.
Okay.
With the three scenarios.
Thank you. All right. Let's move on to item 12. Review and discuss the June 29 joint session of the city council. And I believe that's a Wednesday. Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay. There'll be a public hearing. This is item five, to receive comments on the proposed Pleasant Grove fiscal year 2015-16 budget amendment. So this is the one we did two weeks ago.
This is just a few cleanup items.
Okay.
Um, that we have. And so I put one out in the Dropbox today. Maybe you didn't have time to see. It was sort of late this afternoon. And so just a few, there's only a few things, a couple of grants that we've received. And there's two other items on there. I can't remember. Some community center expenses. So just very small. Just want to make sure that we're in compliance with state code and staying up with budget amendments if we need to do those.
Good.
So...
Thank you. Okay. Item six, to consider for adoption of resolution 2016-028, authorizing the mayor to enter into reimbursement agreements for the 4,000 North Sewer Project. Tina, do you want to talk to this or?
Well, basic, basically, we've sent out the reimbursement agreements to the property owners on 4,000 North, um, under the conditions that the council had previously directed with regard to them paying us back a certain percentage. Existing homes will be paying a certain amount. Anybody who has potential new development will be paying the full $25,000 cost of pro-rata share of the sewer main being installed. So...
Okay. So this is an update on?
Right. They've emailed, we've emailed them out. I've had one landowner go tell me they were going today to have them notarized and return them. I haven't heard from any of the other ones yet.
Okay. Okay. Item seven is to consider awarding Silver Spur Construction, the 4,000 North Sewer Project, in the amount of $281,690.
This is just the bid that we received back in January, I believe, from, they were the low bidder, Silver Spur Construction, for the amount shown there. And so if we do approve the previous item, then we could move forward on awarding that project. Be aware as well that in their contract and as we bid that out, we did have some time stipulations that by July 1st, we would have to make that award in order for them to hold their prices at what they've given us, or they may be able to renegotiate, or we decide to rebid the project if they are not willing to renegotiate and get that done. So just be aware, we are, that's, that's part of the idea.
But it hinges on whether or not we have enough people and the council decides to go forward.
Exactly.
Hey Marty, does that figure include laterals? What, what is that inclusive of?
So that's a lateral from the main to the property, but the, not the cost of the lateral from the stub out into their septic system or wherever their line comes out of their house. So yes, it, it's a lateral just to the property out of the right-of-way. At that point, it would be capped and then they would be responsible for the lateral from therein.
Okay. Thanks.
And just to note, pursuant to the city council's directions, the, the agreement specifically say they're responsible for their own laterals to service their properties.
Right. Any other discussion on that one? All right. Item eight, to consider for approval, an extension for the Creekside at Aspen Grove Platte C subdivision. Final plat located at 440 West, 3300 North.
We've been, well, they came in on May 26th of 2015. They got their plat approved. They've had some difficulty getting all the signatures. They've noticed that there was an easement, a discrepancy from what the surveyor gave them. And they're now trying to get that modified. We were planning to bring that back for just an, an extension so that they can get, move forward with that development. They're close to getting all the signatures. There were, I think, 30 signatures that they had to get up there in order to do this because it included so many of the existing residents up there. So it's been difficult that way. And they've dropped the ball a little bit on that. But it is the same plat. So we didn't see the reason to go back and deny it and have them go back through the whole process for the same plat proposing.
So it's just an extension?
Extension of that.
Any questions? Okay. And then together with our planning commission, item nine, review and discuss general plan chapters one to three. This, is this, uh, can you describe what that process looks like?
Yes. So we will be using PowerPoint, but also have some handouts for everybody just to basically review the format of the general plan in regards to how we do goals and, and everything. So we're going to talk about chapter one, which is basically introductory, and talk about the, the elements that are involved there. But chapter two is our land use chapter, which is really the heart of the plan. So we're going to spend a lot of time on that and talk about the elements that exist in there currently and whether this is how we want to see it laid out and, and the goals that are there. And then three talks about downtown and, and urban design and such. And so those are things that are, we'll be focusing on. But we, we hope it'll be a good discussion, not just listen to Ken Rattleoff reading a PowerPoint, but that it will be more of a, a discussion about what really the general plan is currently and what we would like to see it become.
Will we be doing the, what we would like to see on, as we go through it or?
Yes. So we'll be taking notes and, and I may even use the, the board, you know, just to kind of a, a little bit of facilitation, a little bit to get some results out of our discussion.
If you're worried about the rattling off part, could you bring treats and put the slideshow to music? Is that Hawaiian?
Well, no, I like that. Okay. All right. All right. Thanks, Kim. Thanks for getting us going on that. What's your outside projection on how long this will take?
Well, I think initially, we may have presented a fairly aggressive schedule that was going to get us to October, November. But we decided that doing these meetings with the planning commission and, and going through these chapters before we get to the public, and we would like to have some public participation activities, including a survey, but also some, some meetings. We wanted to get through it so that we, as city council staff and the planning commission, really understand where we're at currently before we get the public involved. So that's going to take us through the summer. So that's probably going to slow our schedule down a little bit. It may get us into the first part of next year sometime before we finish the process.
Do you think we'll be done in 18 months and 10 days?
Yes.
Okay. Just checking. No, it's 10.
On the countdown.
All right. And then we'll have, I think this is training on Open and Plug Meetings Act.
Yes. We're required to do it once a year. Some of you have already... We're required to provide that training once a year. And some of you have already had it, but the planning commission may not have. We have to keep a record for our auditors of everybody that's had it. So we're just going to provide it at that joint meeting and keep track, keep a roll.
Okay. Good. And then there'll be a discussion on the, the July 5 city council meeting. Okay, that's it for, um, next month or next week. And remember, that's on a Wednesday. I keep saying that because Tuesday's primary election. Okay. Libby, do you have anything for us tonight? You staffed? What are you missing? Is that the only one? Okay. We had one. They said no. Okay. Have to try again. All right. Anything else? Ken, anything?
Just, I, I think we had a good presence for the downtown advisory board during strawberry days and have some good balls rolling with the committee that did meet today and making some good progress towards events specifically. But I think we've got a good program going.
Okay. Excellent. David?
Yeah. You've probably been getting the emails from James in the chamber. This Friday is the annual thank you barbecue here in downtown park for chamber member businesses. And they can bring a guest or somebody that's interested in the chamber. It's really a, a great event. The chamber just saying, thank you for participating. Thank you for being a valued member. Gifts and prizes from the chamber to the businesses. And, and you're all invited, of course, as, as the city supports the chamber the way they do. So just let James know or myself know if you're planning on attending that.
Excellent. Question? Waving peace sign?
Two attendees.
Yes, you're limited to two? Is that the question?
No, count me too.
Oh, you're RSVPing. Okay. Anything else, David?
No.
Okay. Dion? Okay. Marty?
Just the standard construction progress. So Locust Ave will be going full bore now that strawberry's over, strawberry days is over. They've already milled up between First and Third East on Third South. They're installing the water line between Fourth East and Locust Ave on Third South. And I believe they'll start milling up the road, starting southbound on Locust Ave this week. They're going to reduce it down to, to, two lanes, northbound and southbound on the east side of the road. So that'll be moving forward really fast. So you'll see a lot of movement there. They're also working on stormwater and getting all those utility lines in. So, um, we've got our micro-surfacing project that has been completed for the micro portion, but we're still working on the Pleasant Grove Boulevard portion of that. We're going to be milling a little bit on Pleasant Grove Boulevard and shutting that, that down. The new date for that is July 10th. We'll see if it changes. But that, right now, is what they've told me is their next date. So it's a Sunday and it's the whole day. They're milling it, paving it and resurfacing it all in one day. So it's, it's a big coordination thing. And there was some question about striping that was asked. We are working on striping those roads. It's our best value to do it all at once. And we were hoping everything was done by this point, but they weren't able to get Pleasant Grove Boulevard scheduled. We're going to see if we can hold out to get that done. If we can't, we'll get in and get those lanes restriped on 11th and 13th. They're probably the most critical ones to get done. So, um, seems like there's one other project. Oh, First East, um, with Questar Gas, they should be back in. They indicated, all right, after strawberry days for about two weeks. We'll be shutting down northbound First East from State Street to Second South. And they'll be diverting traffic on Main Street and Third East. And I expect that, expect to see something here in the next week or so to get going on that for two weeks. And then they'll be out of here.
Is that the relocation of those?
Yep. So they'll pull those testing ports that they've put up there by the Purple Turtle. All that will be put underground and then they'll be out of here for good. So...
What about State Street? We can see the cones.
So are we talking on Second South, State Street?
And about like if we drive out on Third and then from there, both south and northbound.
So that's all, that's all Questar Gas and First East stuff that we were just mentioning there. So they're just rerouting the traffic because there won't be a northbound turn there. But we do have a, a new signal that is being planned for Second South and State Street right there before you go over the bridge. That will be happening, I believe, in the next couple of months. They'll have that construction started.
Right by the rodeo grounds.
Right by the rodeo grounds, a new signal. I think that's it.
I got some feedback at the bank today, the Zion's Bank here in Pleasant Grove, the corner of Second South and Main Street. They're, they're seeing commercial vehicles and, and automobiles blowing through those four ways. They're, and they're, you know, they freak out because they're the tellers and they, they can see them barreling down Second South. They're wondering if flashing lights or something might help, flashing stop signs. I, you probably want to go walk in, talk to them about what they're seeing and figure out what can be done there.
Okay. And, and we can definitely consider that. I, I think they're about 2,000 bucks apiece. Is that right, John, on the flashing signal? So it's just a matter of cost and making sure it's in the budgets to be able to do that.
One car accident would be about 2,000 bucks, right?
Yes. If we had to pay for it, it'd be a lot more than that.
Especially if it's a big truck coming right through.
It's a very wide intersection.
It is.
A lot of distance between.
Same with Main and Center. They blow right through.
Yeah.
They do.
Because they see the light up there, right?
It's pretty popular to have flashing lights nowadays. And so we just need to make sure that we're approaching it, I guess, at the right time, at the right intersection because we could do them at probably another 10. But this is obviously a very high traffic, lots of traffic. But this is obviously a very high traffic, lots of traffic goes through there, so that might be...
We'll just go talk to the tellers at the bank.
Would be happy to do that.
They will bend your ear, and you will know.
Okay.
And then they won't bend my ear when I go in. Thank you. Anything else, Marty? Okay. Dave?
We had a fun Strawberry Days.
Yes, we did.
It was pretty benign. We didn't hurt too many cowboys, and we didn't hurt too many others, so we just figured all the carnival rides stayed upright. I have concerns. But anyway, it went really well. I appreciate your support at the luncheon, at the barbecue. Thanks for coming.
Very nice of your people to do that. That came out of your private funds, and we very much appreciate it being invited. Thank you.
It was nice to have you there. Thanks.
Mike?
Same thing, great Strawberry Days. I sent you, got you all a email just a few minutes ago tomorrow at four.
Can you speak a little louder? I really am serious, I'm losing hearing.
We're doing cupcakes with cops.
Okay.
So if you're bored, we'll be down at Cravings from four to six.
Okay.
And I think she's got a batch of a cupcake of some sort. She will be selling. I don't...
That's great.
Would imagine there's bacon in it, just guessing.
That was good. Thank you. You know, all of you that helped with Strawberry Days, fantastic, just absolutely fantastic. We really appreciate it went off from what we could tell without a hitch, and we just really appreciate the hard work that the city employees put in. It's long hours, it's every day, it's for seven days, just thank you. How else to say that? Sherry?
Same, thanks for supporting Strawberry Days activities that I was involved with. And just FYI, we're averaging about 1,100 people into the library every day right now, so we're busy.
That's good. Does that include your summer reading program?
It does. We're getting about, so it's kind of a guess, because we're, it's hard to count the summer reading people precisely, but our gate counters upstairs are getting around 950 a day, so then you add the children to that, so it's at least 1,100 today.
And how are you coming on your elevator?
We have a pre-bid meeting tomorrow, so that anybody interested can come ask questions, and then the bid will be due next week on Wednesday.
Fantastic. Ken, did you?
I just wanted to pitch in with the library. Sherry was nice enough to let the Downtown Advisory Board on Wednesday borrow one of their big chalkboards that we used outdoors for outdoor comments, and so we went over to pick it up, and I was just amazed, tripping over kids all, and Sherry, I mean, it just, I was amazed how busy that library was. I've never seen so many people in there.
Just picture a thousand children. It's just, it's just mind-boggling.
Yeah, try coming in tomorrow morning, and then you'll see. Yeah. It's fun, though.
Anything else, Sherry?
No.
Okay. Denise? Nothing? Tina?
I don't have anything further.
Kathy?
I have a question for Kathy. The early voting, is there a reason that it's not in Pleasant Grove? What is that?
Because I'm in charge!
She's tired of it.
1-800-U-TALK.
Because of Strawberry Days, we don't have any buildings. We don't have any buildings that they can use for the full two weeks.
Oh.
So instead of doing like one week here and one week here.
Okay. So that's fine.
So Linden, Linden is our closest one. And it goes until?
The 24th, so this Friday.
Anything else, Kathy, on that? Okay. Diana? Do you have anything?
Just Strawberry Days, just very, very grateful.
Very grateful, yeah. Lynn?
Same thing, Strawberry Days was wonderful. Appreciate you.
Good. Sid?
Strawberry Days, yeah, awesome. It was, that video summed it up. That was awesome. A little bit of, I don't want to make a downer, but...
Okay, Eric? But!
But, okay, so the meeting on Tuesday, June 7th. I had a resident sitting in front of me for most of the meeting, and the way I was treated, I decided after that meeting that that would never happen again. Maybe Eric should go and come back. Go ahead, go.
Eric?
Well, I feel peer pressure, I have to see Strawberry Days, so I don't want to... Strawberry Days was great, as usual.
Okay, good deal. Ben?
Strawberry Days, I want to get my hands on that video that we saw, that presentation. Is that on Facebook? Is it on YouTube?
Wyatt Du Close.
I'll check it out.
He has another name. What was the other name? The name of the...
It was like whiskey barrel or...
Tango Whisco or something? We can find it, we'll get it to you.
Kirlo Whisky, K-I-R-L-O, Kirlo Whisky.
Okay.
Whiskey Tango Foxtrot.
That was pretty creative and pretty fast. I mean, today's Tuesday, it's done. It's pretty good.
It was awesome. The other thing I wanted to know?
Yeah, I'm gonna go.
Okay, well, I have one more.
No, go ahead, Ben.
The other thing I wanted to mention to the council, if anybody's interested, I've had a couple of conversations with a member of our community who's interested in doing a emergency preparedness kind of crisis training. I've talked with our chiefs, talked with our city administrator about the possibility of doing, you may recall, Richard Guernsey did a couple of years of crisis training, although this would be very different. This would be kind of an indoor one or two-hour activity slash game kind of scenario.
Tabletop?
Yeah, I don't know what he has in mind exactly, but it sounded like an interesting thing and time that could be well-spent of inquiry with our chiefs what their thoughts are, and I think there's a willingness to explore it if there's an interest from this group to do it. So I throw that out there as a possibility, something that I'd be interested in pursuing. I think it could be timely used.
Okay.
Maybe in a weekend, or maybe a Tuesday night in July, if we have one, we get the calendar, but just let me know if you have interest in doing that.
Yeah.
Okay, did you still want to go?
I'm gonna go, yeah.
You sure?
Yeah, so at the beginning of the year, we talked about bringing more respect and civility back into our meetings, and we put some new policies in place to address that. And I've been dealing with this personally as a councilman, I've about a year and a half with a particular resident, but I've noticed that more residents are kind of starting to, and I specifically noticed this on Tuesday, June 7th, kind of behave this way in a very disrespectful way to the council. Specific examples include interrupting us, shouting out from the audience. On Tuesday, June 7th, there was a resident that kind of suddenly saluted the mayor when he asked someone to, you know, kind of simmer down a little bit, laughing at us, making fun of us during council meetings. I tried ignoring it, I tried addressing it, I've tried doing different things to get through the meeting. I feel like if you want to, you know, talk to the council or the mayor before the stop, before, after the meeting, that's appropriate, but while we're up here trying to do our jobs, that's where the issue for me comes in. So I decided after that meeting that that wasn't going to happen anymore. So I'm here tonight to give some options to the public and those who want to come and have that type of attitude or behavior towards the council, because it really affects me doing my job, and I've ignored it. And I thought about this, that I wouldn't... I wouldn't tell my three boys to go to school every day and be bullied by someone and get up every week in front of the class and give a report, and while they get up, they're going to be laughed at, mocked, interrupted, elders are going to join in, and that they should just sit up there and take it. I would never tell them that, so I'm not going to do it anymore myself. I've earned the right to be here. I've been elected, I have a job to do every Tuesday night. The choice is simple, if you can't come and treat us with respect, then don't come at all. Here's some options: you can stay home and watch the live stream if you think it's going to be a heated topic that you can't control your behavior. You can come and be respectful and join in on the conversation when appropriate. If there are options, and I thought a lot about this, I'm not going to pass a note to the mayor to ask him to ask you to stop. I'm not going to give warnings, I'm not going to try and battle with this as I've done for the past year and a half, I'm just going to ask you to leave. We have a job to do, and if you want to talk to me before or after the meeting, that's fine. But while I'm up here, my focus should be on the people presenting, on the staff and our city business, and I believe I run that right and that respect. But after Tuesday, June 7th, no more. If I need to take a vote of the council to change policy, if I need to ask them that night to have people escorted out, I'll do that, because I need to get things done here in the city and I have a short term to do that. But I'm not going to have a resident sit in front of me for hours, make snide comments, treat me disrespectfully, and other members of the council as well. I'm done. I tried ignoring it, I tried addressing it, like I said, not going to ignore it anymore. I can't. So that's where I'm at. Like I said, I'm happy to meet with people over the phone, in person, through email, but while I'm up here, I deserve some respect. That's it.
Okay. Hey, I'm 15. Do we have any plots tonight? Okay. Reviewing the calendar once again at nauseam, next week there's primary election on Tuesday the 28th, so the joint meeting will be on Wednesday, the 29th. Let me add that after we've had our public safety building meetings, we've reduced it to three meetings in the next several months, and that's because this week there'll be some interviews conducted by Think Architecture with the two chiefs and with the judge on programming. Committee members have been invited, those that are available to attend. I don't remember off the top the date, that's starting tomorrow or two days from now? Tomorrow. And they'll be held in this room?
One at the fire station, the other one's downtown in City Hall.
Okay. Oh, the City Hall conference room, okay. People are invited to come, particularly those public safety committee members are welcome, so they can observe the process and really, you know, come back to the Public Safety Building Committee and be able to vouch for the process that Think and the chiefs and the judge have gone through to verify the numbers and make sure the planning comes back. So those presentations will take place on the 6th. It's Wednesday, the 6th. Yeah. At 7 o'clock in this room, and we'd encourage, this is a good time for the public to start getting involved in the results. The next one will be, come on, help me out.
August 3rd?
August 3rd, and that's going to be after Think has put together the answers for that preliminary programming, and they're going to be able to tell us probably within 90% certainty what the estimated costs of the four options that have been studied would be, and that means you can pretty much be assured that whatever the building costs would be, would be about 90, within 90% of that, maybe even more accurate. And he even believes that at that point he will know which options should be removed from the table because they just obviously don't meet the need. And then the next one was?
August 17th.
August 17th, and that presentation will be drawings, the preliminary drawings for not the architectural renderings, but the block diagrams that show how the remaining options fit on each one of the parcels in the downtown area by the pipe plant, how the flow would work, and from there, then we're prepared to come back to the council with recommendations, and you'll have numbers. And I think if we've timed all of this correctly, which I think we have, there should be about two weeks remaining for the council to look at that and decide, is this something that you want to take some action on in 2016? If you do, you have two weeks to prepare language for the ballot, but you'll already have numbers, you'll have details to work with, and then that committee wants to assist the council, if you decide to go forward, in helping talk with the public about the work that's been done, the process that's been engaged in, and moving forward in that effort. Yeah.
So public comment time?
Public comment time at every one of those meetings. We've asked for, we're planning on each one of those meetings to, after we've had our discussions, then we open it up for some public questions and answers if people want to come and do that. Same thing with the council, those that can attend, we probably call on you to voice opinions. For the most part, I think those that have come really haven't said too much, you know, just kind of observed, which has been good. On the other hand, I think that we're at a point where feedback might be valuable to the process. So I got to tell you, after working with a group of people that hate each other, to see them come away actually saying, "We like this and we're ready to do something," that's pretty neat. It's kind of fulfilling.
Good job.
So I'm excited. I'm excited for us as a city, us as citizens, to see the results of this and maybe what support there is to get something done. Okay, so that's calendar items for the next few weeks and months. Alright, we need to adjourn as the city council and reconvene as the redevelopment agency of Pleasant Grove, and we're going to discuss the budget, right? Is that pretty much what it is? Redevelopment agency budget?
And the Hammond's.
Oh, and the Hammond's extension.
I make a motion that we reconvene as the redevelopment agency.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, Diana, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, Carrie? Alright, and now we are convening as the Pleasant Grove Redevelopment Agency. All members of the agency are present. Our first item of business is to consider for adoption a resolution 2016-01 RDA, that means the first one of the year, right? Adopting the proposed redevelopment agency of Ple... Does it say budget? Yeah. Adopting the proposed redevelopment agency of Pleasant Grove City's fiscal year 2016-17 final budget.
We only have two transactions that we do out of here, but we need to adopt a budget for both. So one is the actual debt service payment on the Hammond property that they're servicing the debt on, and then the other is the do-tara that we added this past year. So just those two items, have a budget.
Okay. Did you want to talk about them at all, or is there anything to say other than...
No. The Hammond's are currently covering our debt service payment. We have two payments a year, December 1st and June 1st, and then, like I said, the other, we're receiving tax increment to pass on to, for the do-tara agreement. And so I just put that in the budget this year, now that we know a close amount. It could vary a little bit based on the tax increment, but that's fairly close to what it was this past year. So if it was any more than that, we'd probably have to come back and amend, but hopefully it'll be in that, in that ballpark, what we're receiving.
Okay. Questions for Denise? Discussion?
I have none.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion, adopt resolution 2016-01 RDA, adopting the proposed redevelopment agency of Pleasant Grove's fiscal year 2016-2017 final budget. Put your copy of the proposed budget, it's available in the recorder's office and at the library.
And I'll second it.
Motion by Eric, second by Diana by voice. Diana?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Sid?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, our next item of business is a continued item. This is to consider a resolution 2016-02, second one of the year, RDA, of the governing body of the redevelopment agency of Pleasant Grove City authorizing the chair of the RDA to sign a Fifth Amendment and restated agreement with the John Q. Hammond's Trust regarding a hotel and convention center project and providing for an effective date.
This one's been a long time coming. This is the finalization of an extension that the city RDA agreed to grant to the Hammond's organization with regard to their performance...
organization with regard to their performance deadlines. This agreement allows them till January 1st of 2018 to have at least $65 million worth of value, property value, constructed in the project area. It also solidifies our position under the trust deed. We required them to sign over a trust deed with the last extension. This modifies that trust deed and just solidifies our position as the lien holder on the property in first position. It does, however, the agreement also provides that should they begin construction and need us to subordinate for a construction loan, that we agree to do that, to allow them to get the financing to begin the project. I think that's basically it. All of the other terms and conditions of the previous agreement remain in place, except for the specific ones that are being modified, which I've outlined for you. You have any questions or concerns?
I sent it to us.
They're continuing to make the payments, like Denise said. They're committed to the project. They've got some pending litigation of their own that they're trying to work through.
What's the latest update on that?
I don't have one, I'm sorry. I tried to get ahold of Greg Groves the other day for something else, and I wasn't able to get him. They're gone a lot this time of year. I don't know if they hunt or fish, or...
Doing something for them.
Or don't answer their phone.
If they see it's from Pleasant Grove City, then...
I mean, every time I talk to him, he's on his way out to do something.
And playing baseball.
I think the good news, in my opinion, and others may have a different opinion, the good news for this is, when you look at how many times they have paid... Just paid the bond. Twice a year, every year, ever since the agreement was struck. The city of Pleasant Grove, the citizens of Pleasant Grove have not had to come up with a dime to cover this. And if they deliver on what they have committed to deliver, we end up with two hotels in the convention center. A little patience, so...
Yeah, I guess my perspective's a little different. I mean, there are costs associated with the extensions, right? I mean, we've got outside legal counsel assistance, some of this drafting, right? And other costs of the citizens and the work that's done to delay this.
The Hammond's organization is committed to, I mean, they pay most of the extraneous costs, the title work and all of that is paid by them.
Okay. Does that help?
It helps.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, any other discussion or questions? All right, if not, I'll entertain a motion. I'd love to make this motion, but I can't. Someone?
I'll make it for you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I move that we adopt resolution 2016-02 RDA of the governing body of the redevelopment agency of the Pleasant Grove City, authorizing the chair of the RDA to sign a fifth amended and restated agreement with John Q. Hammond's Trust regarding a hotel convention center project and providing for an effective date.
Second.
Which, oh, do I have to give the effective date?
No.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion by Diana, and we have a second by Lynn.